Evening everyone, welcome to the January eighteenth Committee of the Whole. As per custom, I'm the Deputy Mayor and so the Deputy Mayor chairs the committee of the whole meeting. So item number one, I'll call the meeting to order at five oh one P M today on January the eighteenth two thousand twenty-two. Before we get going, I'll read our land acknowledgement and that we're pleased to be here today on the traditional territory of Treaty Six and the Metis homeland. We acknowledge all those who share a deep connection with this land. The city of Beaumont respects the histories, languages and cultures of all Canada's first peoples, whether they be of First Nation, Métis or Inuit descent, and appreciates that their presence continues to enrich Canada's vibrant communities. We're all treaty people, the peace treaties bind us all. All right, moving on to item number two here in our agenda, the adoption, I'll ask if there are any changes to the to the agenda at all?
Thank you Chair, administration has no changes to the agenda this evening.
Wonderful, I'll ask you to bring up a motion on the screen here and if there is a committee member that can move the agenda as about to be presented, if they could just just raise the the virtual hand, so I can see that. Council of Barnhart, I'll leave that to you to read that motion to the agenda, thanks.
Thank you Chair, I move that the Committee of the Whole adopt the January eighteen twenty-two Committee of the Whole meeting agenda as presented.
Thank you very much, I'll call a question on that if you use your using your reactions button and vote either green or red please. Seeing that carries unanimously for now, six nothing, and just to confirm administration will clear the votes as we make our way through. Moving on to up item number three, adoption of the minutes. So we we need to go through and approve the the minutes from the previous committee of the whole meetings. So again, I'll ask administration to bring up a motion here to move that the minutes be accepted as presented. And is there a committee member willing to to move this motion? Counselor McCook?
I move that the Committee of the Whole adopt the November sixteenth twenty twenty-one Committee of the Whole meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you very much, any discussion on this, anyone got any concerns or questions around the the minutes from the previous meeting? None, I'll call the question. Carries six, nothing, thank you for that. And just just to acknowledge, Council Miller is having some technical challenges getting online, so she's rebooting and will be joining us momentarily here. That that moves us over to item number four, presentations and delegations. And so council or committee members, you you would have all read your agenda in advance and know that there's quite a few presentations today here, which is the the purpose of the Committee of the Whole. The one thing I did want to draw your attention to is foresee where we have E R B coming in at six o'clock sharp. So we've got two presentations in advance of that, and obviously just to ensure we're respectful of the chair's time of E R B, we'll we'll make sure we we hit that six P M deadline and then we'll be looking to take a break once we get through that presentation. So we've got two exciting presentations coming up, so first up we have four A, I think Ms. Brom, you're you're speaking to this one here for us.
Yes, thank you Chair, I will just share my screen and get us started.
And I'll just acknowledge that Council Miller has been able to join us, so thank you, we're up here.
Okay.
You can see your screen, so you're good whenever you are.
Yeah, sorry, just give me one moment, I am, okay, there we go. So good evening Chair, members of the committee and the public. My name is Tika Brom, I'm the manager of current planning for the city of Beaumont. With me to present this evening is Lisa Jury, our senior current planner. We're happy to be here this evening to talk about the city's city of Beaumont's land use bylaw, our zoning blueprint. I will start with an overview of our zoning blueprint and then Lisa will present the findings of our regular monitoring and reporting. Beaumont's land use bylaw, our zoning blueprint, was given third reading by council on April ninth two thousand and nineteen. It establishes the uses that may be carried out on each parcel of land and the standards that must be followed when using or constructing on land within our municipality. The purpose of our zoning blueprint is to ensure development occurs in an orderly and desirable way and that development implements the vision and strategic goals of the community. Our zoning blueprint has seven land use districts, each with different intents and with land uses and standards defined in each district. Our zoning blueprint implements Beaumont's municipal development plan, our complete community. Our complete community was adopted by council in two thousand and nineteen and outlines goals and policies that fall under six overarching policy theme areas shown here on the screen. Healthy vibrant community, responsible development, effective movement of goods and people, environmental stewardship, economic strength and safety and emergency management. Traditional land use bylaws strictly segregate all land uses and building types. They can be prescriptive and historically have also included regulations that don't provide value or aren't valid. City builders have learned that moving away from traditional ways of regulating land use makes the development process faster and less costly, removes problematic regulations to foster more social inclusion and equality, prevents stagnation in neighborhoods and urban decline, and density is more fluid and distributed, which means that service delivery is more efficient. We can conserve more agricultural land while our infrastructure costs go down. It also improves human health by reducing automobile dependency and grows a strong sense of community through happenstance, socialization and cohesion. Our zoning blueprint's approach is different from traditional land use bylaws. Its unique and innovative approach is flexible, simplified. It aims to be inclusive, provides more choice, builds complete neighborhoods and is adaptable to change and enables reinvestment in neighborhoods over time. Our zoning blueprint does this by placing additional emphasis on regulating built forms through building typologies and standards instead of by proposed use. Development standards and regulations stimulate new and diverse building products that meet the needs of the community. It keeps the number of land use districts low to improve usability and processing timelines. And land use types are grouped together based on similarities like infrastructure needs and offsite impacts. Each parcel defines the number of dwelling units allowed instead of defining different housing forms as a different type of land use. Compatible land uses can co-locate to support the viability and intent for the district. Now I'm going to provide some specific examples and some scenarios outlining how our zoning blueprint builds our community better. Flexibility and adaptability provides value when neighborhoods are being built and when neighborhoods age. The more permitted uses, sorry, the more permitted uses and the broader your land use definitions are, the more flexible your development process can be. Because it provides more options for how a parcel of land can develop. Flexibility is important because the market fluctuates, housing trends change rapidly and customer needs vary greatly from one person to the next. With more flexibility, landowners can invest in their applications with confidence and adapt to the market quicker and with less cost. It means builders can customize their products to meet the needs of their customer instead of speculating and then needing to change their districting to meet slight changes in the market. This brings innovation and variation to our built form as well. It encourages investment and helps Beaumont keep up with fast growth. Our neighborhoods will be less cookie cutter, less repetitive and grow with a greater sense of place and this benefits the community overall. The flexibility and adaptability of our land use bylaw means that people have more choices. The way traditional land use bylaws segregate the types of housing leads to some housing types being underrepresented, for example. The cost and delays of redistricting can make a project not feasible and erodes housing affordability. Other regulations like parking requirements that are too high can have a similar effect. So our zoning blueprint enables invisible and distributed density that allows our community to maintain our small town feel while also meeting our density targets and obligations. Housing choice is important for the community. So consider this scenario. A family with two working adults and two young children move into their home. Sometime later, the family transitions to a single income family. Maybe a career transition, a relationship breakdown or injury leads to the change and this family has now decided that they want to change their housing needs, their their housing needs have changed. Whatever the circumstance, it's normal for housing needs to change over your lifetime. And in Beaumont, this family wouldn't have to move from their home. They might find suitable housing in their neighborhood or they could stay in their home and could adapt to their home to better suit their needs. Maybe they add a suite to help with the mortgage or have their parents move into a garden suite in the backyard. The dwelling still looks like a single family house, but now they don't need to move away from their friends and support system, their kids don't have to change schools or maybe they just didn't want to say goodbye to their vegetable garden in the backyard. The scenario I just described in the flexibility in our zoning blueprint means that residents do need to be more comfortable that housing around them won't be the same as their own and it might change over time. But it makes our neighborhoods more resilient and inclusive and not everyone wants to live in the same type of housing. It also means that neighborhoods continue to introduce new families which keep schools open and multi-generational neighborhoods grow together as our city ages. Places naturally go through cycles of growth and change, but we can avoid decline that occurs when neighborhoods can't adapt to the needs of the community. Along with changing the configuration of housing, Beaumont's neighborhoods can introduce home-based businesses and small-scale commercial uses. We can provide our neighborhoods, we can protect our neighborhoods from becoming irrelevant or unattainable. And as our population grows, our commercial uses can grow too. Together, the approach of our zoning blueprint provides many benefits. It supports innovation, economic development, entrepreneurs and ensures we're building a better community over time. So with that, I'll now hand it over to Lisa. She's going to take the committee through key takeaways from our monitoring program, including trends and some encouraging things that we're seeing on the ground. So I'll just stop Cher and she's going to bring up her own presentation so that she can control.
Okay, can everyone see that?
We got it, yeah.
Thank you, as Tika mentioned, I'm Lisa Jury and I'm a senior current planner with the city, so thank you to the Chair and Committee for letting me present, so like Tika said, I'm going to spend the remainder of this presentation going over the monitoring report and trends we're seeing as well as talking about some next steps that'll be coming forward. So as a reminder, the bylaw was approved in two thousand and nineteen and previous council has received two monitoring reports to date. And then this one that's been brought forward, which is going to focus on results from January to December two thousand and twenty-one. So Tika talked a little bit about development permits, but they're the most frequent application we receive for the application of our zoning blueprint and so this is what the monitoring report really focuses on. So it's important to note that although this report focuses on development permits, so what is allowed for a specific development on the land, ensuring that it meets the zoning and development regulations. There are a variety of other permits and processes involved, so for example, a house permit would have a development permit, then it would have a building permit, then it could have lock rating inspection, so there is a wider process involved with this. So in our earlier reporting, we included assessment metrics that focused on monitoring impacts of the bylaw that could be measured in the shorter term. So we looked at things like development permit timelines, types of housing bill, the number of variances that were required for applications and the general ease of interpretation and decision-making by administration. But now that the bylaw has been in place for a longer period of time, we're now actually able to identify some of those trends and key performance indicators that measure how successful the long-term policies and goals that are outlined in the municipal development plan, our complete community are going, so we can actually see some of these things happening on the ground now that it's been around a little bit longer, which I'll outline a bit further in the presentation. So getting into the data, I put a few pie charts on the screen there, so despite the fact that we've had increased demand for services, the report actually shows that our average processing time for development permits has decreased since the last monitoring report. So looking at this, these charts in front of you, it's measuring when an application was deemed complete to the date a decision was made. So you see across the board, the majority of our development permit decisions are being made between zero to three days, which is quite quick. And that's quite a bit of an improvement from the previous monitoring report where we saw an improvement for our house permits at sixty-seven percent faster than last time. Our tenant commercial improvements were forty percent faster and our residential improvements were about forty percent faster. So and residential improvements are those kind of smaller development permits that you'd be looking at like a deck, an accessory building, maybe a shed, home-based businesses, things like that. So staff have been working really hard with the development community to improve the completeness and quality of applications at the intake to help with these processing times, but they've also just been working expeditiously to keep up with the volume of permits that we have. So I'm going to get into some of those successes that we've seen with the bylaw, but before I get into that, I just wanted to outline that a lot of these successes can be attributed to the way our permitted and discretionary uses are outlined in this unique bylaw. So neighborhoods can accommodate a spectrum of uses and we've determined what is permitted uses have similar scale and should be approved as of right. Alternatively, discretionary uses allow the development authority to use their discretion to determine what scale is compatible to each other when making a decision. So discretionary uses have a twenty-one day appeal period, so that that will delay construction by twenty-one days even if no appeals are launched. So it's important that all these discretionary uses are limited to where there's a legitimate additional control that is warranted to benefit the community. So when thinking about that, you might be wondering, so what can and cannot be considered in a planning decision? So planning decisions can only take into account planning matters. So these matters have to be related to the development and use of the land in the public interest. So common issues that cannot be considered in planning issues are things like we can't consider a loss of you, perceived loss of property value, a loss to a trade to a competitor, the level of profit a development might make are some of things that we can't take into consideration. We also don't take into consideration discriminatory concerns against what future potential users there might be, so sometimes you hear those items related to group homes or non-market affordable housing and seniors. So taking that into account, we have seen some really encouraging uptake in our zoning bylaw with these permitted uses as well as the appropriate use of discretionary uses. So one of the big trends we're finally starting to see is these new unique housing forms. So we have a couple builders who've been really able to leverage the innovative aspects of our land use bylaw and have been able to offer things. You know, Tika spoke about a family scenario, but we are starting to see people wanting garage suites and basement suites being constructed. So this is adding additional dwelling units where it's a positive contribution to the housing choice people have as well as housing affordability for people. So what on the ground, again, looks like a single family home might in the back actually have a coach home as seen in this photo or a secondary suite in the basement or something like that. So people aren't stuck to an apartment or single family looking for that missing middle that Tika showed in a previous slide. Another trend we're starting to see is a diversity frontage standards. This one has taken a little while because we've known, we know that front attached garages remain the predominant housing type in Beaumont, but we have seen some changes with more laneway access houses. So not only do they provide an aesthetic pleasing street view, they have some real benefits for being able to provide things like the landscaping that we like to see neighborhoods. You get some of those street trees, there's less conflict with driveways and things like street furniture, lamp posts, fire hydrants, et cetera. Also, when you're on the laneway, people are able to take up some of those garage suites. Even if they don't want to do them when they first buy them, people have the opportunity to change over time. One other trend that I wanted to share with you all about that we've started to notice is the success story about compatible commercial uses being located with residential uses. So one example that we have this photo here, a resident was able to chose to build in Beaumont to create a purpose-built space for their business in their garage. It offered the opportunity for a large detached accessory building that contains a gym offering personal training services. So this contributes to economic growth within the city, it attracts entrepreneurial investments and that it means that services are closer to people's homes. One other example I wanted to highlight showing this small-scale commercial and residential areas is currently under construction in Dance Row Meadows, so this building is called Dance Row Landing. And you'll see that it has commercial on the on the main floor and residential options above. So the builder really wanted to make it a very walkable with lots of street activation and provide those different opportunities within their city so that people could walk to a neighborhood convenience. So we're starting to see these neighborhoods develop where, you know, Dance Row Meadows has a school, it has some townhouse developments, some singles, some commercial that's starting to create that more complete unity. Another metric that we look at in the monitoring report are subdivision developments. So we're going to see two new major neighborhoods start to build out this coming year and that's La Revue in the north and Elan in the west. So we did receive a very high number of subdivision applications during the reporting period. We received six applications and four extensions. Within these, we've seen a trend towards smaller lot lines, including some zero lot line housing, which is zero lot line developments or when there's a space between the buildings are reduced. Our subdivisions we received are about fifty percent larger than our average subdivisions we've received in two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty. And because they were larger and in new neighborhoods, a lot of them were a lot, were far more complex. So our processing times for subdivisions were around one hundred and thirteen days rather than our target of sixty days. So now that I've identified some of the key findings in the monitoring report and some of the trends we're seeing, we've also identified several areas that do need further research or engagement to make some changes to the land use bylaw. This includes a review to keep up with legislative changes as well as two ones I'm going to quickly highlight are the sign section of the land use bylaw as well as taking a look at that zero lot line product. So we have encountered some difficulties with some of our sign permits, so we know we want to engage further with stakeholders, including the business community so that we can improve the user experience with the sign permits. So we know we're going to have some conversations with the community about freestanding signage, how we can clarify and simplify the regulations. Also, we stopped processing fast-track applications at the beginning of the pandemic, so we wanted but however, we realized no one was actually asking us to to reintroduce it or bring it up, so it made us wonder if we need to talk to the community, gauge their interest on it and to see if people are even aware that that is an option to them that we can discuss about reintroducing. Another area we want to talk about is those zero lot line products, so those houses that are closer together. They're one of our most popular products and so we just want to make sure that we're managing them appropriately and doing some engagement on how we can make sure some of our other goals are being addressed with this housing type, so we want to make sure that we're getting the landscaping, we want to see that there's appropriate drainage happening and that there's some on-street parking being provided particularly when we see front attached zero lot line product as well as making sure that these remain in a product that considers accessibility. So we're going to bring back these amendments to council as well as those other legislative changes I mentioned within this year. After that engagement and research is complete, we're also going to continue bringing forward the annual monitoring report so we can ensure that we're continuing to track the success of the land use bylaw and amend it as required. So essentially, you're you're going to be seeing a lot of us still. So get used to it, that kind of concludes the general findings that we've had thus far, so thank you very much for your time and Tika and myself are happy to answer any questions you might have.
Great, thanks, thanks Lisa for walking through that. You know, great overview and good to see some some positive trends coming here. And before we open up for questions, I just just remind folks that, you know, item four B where we get into the broader planning department overview. So let's keep this round of questioning specifically to to this land use bylaw piece if we can, so with that being said, the people, any committee members have any questions? Go to Counselor, Mr. Van Newkirk, yeah mate, over to you.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, thanks for the comprehensive presentation, it's good, I like to see the monitoring and I really like the fact that you've highlighted signage and zero lot lines for further review because they are the two things that I hear about the most, so I'm looking forward to that, I would say. When it comes to the feedback that you get to make these changes, can you just talk to how you collect that feedback, who it comes from and how it lands into this report? Because you've provided this report based on feedback, but you didn't say, or you did, but just talk to us about how you get all the feedback, who it comes from and if you're sitting waiting for the feedback or if you're soliciting the feedback, thank you.
Chair through to committee member, Van Newkirk, thank you for the question. The majority of the data that we receive in that we use to create the monitoring report is actually from our Green Book. It's a tracking tool we use where we track all of our permits, so we can take a look at what kind of housing types are coming in, when they're deemed complete, when a decision is made. So that's the majority of it, looking at what variances we're receiving. Some of the other feedback that's more general about uptake on things like signage, we just know our processing times regarding that as well as conversations we've had with applicants. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Tika?
See? No, I think you you covered it. Something I might add is that we also regularly meet with U D I and our Canadian Home Builders Association and those are kind of roundtable open floor discussions, so we get some feedback in that regard too.
Steve, do you have further questions?
Yeah, you bet, so just to dig one deeper on that, how do you document concerns from the community and residents? So when those concerns are brought in to the city through the generic info at line or through council into administration or through home from, you know, buyers to home buyers into the city, how are you capturing that? Because based upon your answer here, the, what was it, the Green Book monitoring is is great, but it's all numerical. It's all it's all numbers and tracking, but what process do you have in place to make sure that the feedback that you get from residents, the words that people say are captured and considered in this monitoring report, thank you.
Through the Chair to committee members, Van Newkirk. We do work closely with our municipal enforcement on any complaints that are received or they're directly sent to us, so we are aware of those. And anytime there's an item that comes up, we typically will follow up with municipal enforcement saying we had a concern like this. Have you received others in the area? Have you received others in this likeness? So we have a broader understanding of those, I can see that Kendra probably wants to tag in, so I will let her continue.
So we have a broader understanding of those. I can see that Kendra probably wants to tag in, so I will let her continue.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to catch you off, Mr. E. You were doing great. I just was going to add in one thing when you were finished and the only thing is that we are implementing PLL, which is our permit lands and licensing software. It is tied to City Works. We aren't currently tracking any of our inquiries in City Works as it stands right now. But we will be moving forward, we'll be able to tie those back to the property. That was all I was going to add to Mr. E's comments.
Steve, do you have any further questions?
No, just kind of a closing comment. I think that. I think that the answers to this question are sufficient for what you're doing right now, but I but I think this is where the attention needs to lie. There's a lot of feedback that council gets independently once things are under construction. Or once things are in a concept, or sorry, when things are in the concept, there's less questions. When, you know, the nails start getting hammered, then there's then there's a bunch of questions. So I do think that there is a feedback collection gap somewhere in the process. That needs to be documented and make its way from citizens into the monitoring report. And that may be a feedback collection mechanism that we're going to have to be proactive with. And and solicit feedback and and set up some times, dates, places, things, something to collect feedback. So that's all for me. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Stephen. And just to add on to that, I, you know, certainly an accountability for residents to, you know, to make sure that those. Concerns and those questions, comments get through to the right place. What I'm hearing from from Stephen, I would agree is just to help council to be able to point these folks in the right direction. So we facilitate that. So good good comments. Thanks, Steve. I'll go councillor McCook followed by councillor Tessier.
Thank you, Chair. So I just have a question. So you guys say that we kind of changed some of the wording, I think, from. Each parcel defines the number of dwelling units allowed instead of defining different housing forms. As a different type of residential land use, can you just help me understand what's the benefit to this? Because I think that might be as well sometimes where some frustration might arise is. People think that maybe normal houses or something might be going up around them and then a larger building pops up. So there, this is maybe not clear to the general public, so can you just help clarify that for me?
Um, thank you, Chair, through to councillor McCook. Great question. Yes, the language in our land use bylaw does not state apartment building. Semi-detached, single-family home like you see in some of the more conventional land use bylaw. All dwelling units are called dwelling units. Again, it's to encourage a diversity of housing and to not have preferential. Treatment over one type over another, so it allows people to provide different options and many residential units allow. Up to four dwelling units. That being said, the important distinction about this land use bylaw is it focuses on the form. So even if you have four dwelling units, it needs to fit all the other regulations. So meet your parking, all those kinds of things. But it also needs to meet the built form standards. The focus is on the built form. So in those residential neighborhoods, typically the look is it will look like a single-family home, but it might have that basement suite. Or second or garage home, that kind of thing. Again, it's to provide more choice, more affordability. And and provide those middle options. Tika, would you like to add to that?
No, I'm okay.
Thank you. Yeah, that definitely makes sense. I just think. Part of it will be, I think, just education and stuff, and I think you guys as the planning department, you'll probably run into that a little bit. Where people, you know, won't realize that something maybe larger or whatnot might pop up around them. But but I definitely understand the the reasoning behind it. Another question, Chair. So when you guys talk about, you also talk about. Trying to minimize discretionary uses and the use of variances to make approvals faster. So the trade-off is the ability for adjacent landowners to provide input into development. Permit decisions are less frequent. So are we talking about taking away adjacent landowners' ability to have input? And what goes on next to them or am I understanding that correctly?
Thank you, committee member McCook. So there are many opportunities in the planning process for. Residents to provide input. Some of the most important ones are. Are often at those higher levels, so your area structure plan, your redistricting applications. And then at the subdivision, they are circulated them. And that's more of an informational one, but those other two are where there's public hearings. So they can come and speak to council before those decisions are made. At the development permit process, you're correct, when it's a permitted use, it is approved as of right if all those regulations are met. If there's a variance from it, it's circulated. And then it it has a twenty-one day appeal period, so if they're proposing something that doesn't fit with the regulations, the neighbors are notified. Or those discretionary uses.
Okay, okay, perfect. Thank you. And then you go on to say that public and stakeholder input can happen. Like once building has begun, what input or changes could they make? Or have once building has already begun?
Um, just to clarify, do you mean how I saying in a. There's a development permit that a building permit is that the.
I think so, yeah.
Um, that. Sorry if I made that perception. I'm just saying there's a longer process after. The public doesn't have an opportunity to comment on a building permit or lock grading or things like that. So the development permit is that last opportunity of given that one unless I'm missing any that Ms. Brom can.
Thank you. And then just one more quick note. I love the example and the success stories of the different kind of housing and. Allowing garage and basement suites and different kind of smaller commercial type things. That's really great. My one question or maybe comment is just around parking and additional parking. I know we we talk about the amount of parking and stuff, but I know inevitably there will be issues. So I'm just wondering how how we will kind of tackle that.
Thank you, committee member McCook. The current land use bylaw has that for every additional, so right now in Beaumont, if you have a dwelling unit. You require one parking stall and every additional unit over seventy-five square meters, you need to have another unit. So if they're adding a suite over seventy-five square meters, they need to provide an additional parking stall.
Thank you so much. That's on my questions, Chair. Thank you.
I guess I should also add, a lot of these opportunities also do have lots of on-street parking as well. So just to keep that in consideration.
If I if I could jump in as well through the chair to councillor McCook. In practice, what I might add as well is that actually almost always our parking regulations are exceeded. By quite a bit. So we are seeing typically four, six stalls provided on site for a residential home. So we are exceeding the parking by quite often. And another thing I wanted to add is that when we're dealing with behavioral parking. That is probably not desirable, like blocking a driveway or something like that. We do have other bylaws and mechanisms to enforce challenges like that. And we do we do lean on municipal enforcement to address those issues.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Kat, let's move on to councillor Tessier.
Thanks so much, Chair, and great presentation. Really appreciated all the detail in it. Just a question on parking. So when you talk about street parking and that's looked at, how? How is it looked at and determined, you know, this is the amount of parking we have on this street? Is it looked at the area, the type of street, what's next door, are there other businesses around that have home business or how is that done?
Thank you, committee member Tessie. So when an application comes forward, we have parking requirements that there are minimums that need to be met on site. So that is a requirement for things like an additional dwelling unit or. Home-based businesses type of situations, but when we're looking at some of those discretionary uses. That's where we'll take a look at the broader area of the context of the area. So say someone is looking at a daycare in a residential area. We look at that area, where is actually drop off going to happen, where is there on-street parking? That kind of thing comes into account.
Okay, thank you. So when you have that discretionary time, does then any public engagement happen? Or does the city just make that decision and look at it?
Uh, thank you, committee member Tessie. So what happens is the development authority takes into account the planning rationale. They make the decision and they advertise the decision to the adjacent residents. And then they have that twenty-one day appeal period where the residents get notified, oh, this this is happening in my neighborhood. And they can file an appeal, they can call and ask questions, they don't have to file an appeal to get information. But provides them the avenue to ask, find out a little bit more. And if they're unhappy with it, or if the applicant is unhappy with our decision as well. Either party can appeal and it goes to the subdivision and appeal authority, subdivision and development appeal board, SDAB. And that's an independent body that makes those decisions.
Perfect. That answers my question. So there's some there's some chance there for the residents to have their input on it. And I couldn't find anywhere in the bylaw, can you build a three-story residential home and a basement so four stories high? A single-family residential home? Because I saw one being built and I was like, I I was intrigued because I know there's height limits, but.
Um, I don't want to answer out of turn.
Lisa, I can help you out there. We can take that, we can take that away and you want to just take that as a council inquiry and maybe submit that councillor Tessier. Good question. Let's let's give him a bit of time to get the answer for that one.
No worries. One last one, I think it was, oh. So when you were looking at that home gym, like it, I I've got tons of questions on that because people drive five-ten. And they're like, what's this big garage do like in that area, right? So cool that you brought that up. How does it work for that process? Is there parking restrictions for something like that when that development permit comes in? And is that a minor or major development permit that would go? Would go that direction? Because if it's major, that means it does have to have public engagement. If it's minor, it doesn't.
Um, thank you, committee member Tessie. It it depends, the engagement isn't necessarily if it's major, it's minor, it's if it's discretionary or if it's permitted. So a permitted use, if they meet all the regulations and don't vary them and change it, the development authority approves it. If it's listed as a discretionary use, that's where they get to consider things like the parking and and that kind of thing like that. Where they would take that into account on that application. They can add conditions to the permit such as hours of operation, certain situations where they've. Required soundproofing a garage due to concerns with noise. So the development authority can add all these conditions. And again, the applicant can appeal any of those conditions. If if, you know, say that gym owner was like, this is outrage, you know, upset, they can make an appeal as well as neighbors can appeal. Can happen both ways. What was your, and so in that situation, if it were a discretionary use, the neighbors would be identified and they can make an appeal. Sorry, I think I might have missed a component of your.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering, so if it's like when it's determined if it's major or minor and it's a gym, so people coming in and out. And you're saying, I think I understand what you're saying, there's parking restrictions if it's a discretionary permit.
Um, there are parking requirements for permitted uses too. So they have to meet those, but parking is another example on discretionary uses where we could potentially require more or add.
Okay.
Around that.
You answered it. That's perfect. Thank you. So thank you for answering those. I know they're, they can be a little bit tough at times. And I just to comment to like, you know, during the campaign, you hear from the builder side, let's cut more red tape, right? And like, let's make things more faster. And then from the customer side, it's like, you know, they end up moving in and having a lot of problems. And I think there's a fine line of going too fast and too slow and, you know, I don't know if anyone's figured that out. So I appreciate you answering all those questions, so thank you.
Thanks councillor Tessier, and I'll just acknowledge that there is, you know, council did approve some some budget there for. To do the service review of processes, including land use planning, development, engineering, that that's coming back by the end of Q2. So that I think will will provide a lot more comments for us as well. Your worship looked like you had a comment you wanted to weigh in, mate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick, quick comment. Thank you, a quick question, actually. Thank you, ladies, for your presentation. A quick question is, you mentioned, Ms. Jury, about the subdivision applications being quite detailed above normal. And our approval time went from roughly sixty-two or sixty-three days to almost one hundred and thirteen, which is virtually double. So is that becoming the norm for subdivisions? Or those are just sort of the exceptions we had all the same time. It concerns me to have our turnaround time being almost doubled. So I get an idea if that's a trend we're seeing with subdivisions or this is more of an anomaly. Thank you.
Thank you, committee member Danalek. I would say it's more of an anomaly because they were so complex. Not only were they larger than we typically see, but particularly they were the start of two new neighborhoods. Once a neighborhood is kind of got its flow going, we can expect a lot of those bigger items to be worked out. At those earlier phases. For example, with the one on Fiftieth Street, that is a large development that's both commercial and residential. And brand-new access is on Fiftieth Street, so there's a lot more. But as we see the neighborhood continue to build out, those accesses have already kind of been worked through through traffic impact assessments, different things like that. So I think a lot of the delay is in account to the fact that they were quite large. And then a combination of new neighborhoods, so there's no baseline yet for the neighborhood if that resonates. Tika, anything else to add about?
I do have one other thing to add. Sorry, just to tie in with what Mr. E was saying. We have experienced a fifty percent increase in subdivisions over this past year as well. Which is also attributing to some of that increased processing time. And just like they said, the sheer complexity of some of these items definitely does take that extra amount. But we're seeing a lot more of those ones where they're either finishing something off or going through those processes. So it's definitely something and as you'll find out in my presentation, we have. You know, one person kind of processing this, so we're working through it, but they're really getting that done, so.
So I appreciate it. So basically it comes down to sheer volume, doubles as many subdivisions and double complexity basically on each other, so I can understand that. Thank you for clarifying. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alrighty, I think that concludes the 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 presentation here. So thank you, Ms. Jury and Ms. Brom for for that information. I wonder if the clerk could bring up a motion to receive this as information and I'll ask for council member to to move that motion. I see Mira trying to earn his keep tonight. I'll go up to you, mate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that the committee of the whole received the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two report, land use bylaw, our zoning blueprint monitoring and reporting. As information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on that? Saying none, I'll call the question. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. It does, I I did check in with Ms. Raymond. We do have a presentation coming up here around the planning department overview. She thinks she's going to be able to get it done. We want to be respectful of Karen's time coming up here. But I'll, we'll go to item four B here for you around the department overview report, planning and development. So Ms. Raymond, I'll pass it over to you and then we'll see, get on questions and we'll just be cognizant of time here. So over to you.
Thank you, Chair Monkoff Swain. So today we have our planning and development department overview. Can everybody see my screen?
We got it.
It's going to be like the joke of twenty twenty through to twenty twenty, whenever, right? I haven't done this yet, so I'm just making sure that everything is going to come up and I'm not inadvertently sharing my email or something. Which has been known to happen, right, everybody? Okay. So just want to say welcome. Thank you for this opportunity to provide you with this presentation tonight. We're going to provide you with the planning and development department overview. So I'm Kendra Raymond, the director of planning and development. With me tonight, we also have. Tika Bromer, manager of current planning, who just presented on the land use bylaw, as well as Joanna Wong, who is our manager of long-range planning. So those are the two core service areas that are within planning and development. This is the first department overview presentation that the committee will receive. There is one other one tonight from financial, from the finance department. And you will continue to expect these through twenty-twenty-two. Alright. My computer is not responding. Alright, so the presentation outline, so we're gonna provide you with the Department Overview, why land use planning? I'm not gonna get into too much detail, recognizing that we did have land use orientation in November. So I'd like you to hold any questions that you have until the end. I'm not sure how this might work, I've got about nine minutes until Ms. Wechek's uh presentation here. So if you do have any questions, maybe we might need to take them after, but I'll defer that to the Chair for his consideration. We're gonna talk about the Planning Framework and Process, Core Programs and Services, Recent Upcoming Initiatives and Questions. So the department is responsible for the orderly and sustainable growth that reflects Beaumont's vision. We create and implement council-approved statutory and non-statutory plans and policies. The governance and decision-making process encompasses providing both recommendations to council and making decisions within the department's authority based on our professional expertise. As I mentioned, we have three core service areas within Planning and Development, which are Long Range Planning, Current Planning, Building Services. So this is the org chart for the department, as you can see how we are organized, we've talked about this at, at Budget. But we've got the manager of current planning, Shona's Manager of Planning and Development, and the Manager of Long Range Planning, Safety Codes and Development, or our Development and Building Services are within the current planning side as well as the subdivision. And then we have Regional Planning and all of our long-range statutory planning, as well as special projects, uh, community visioning, affordable housing, those all fit within the Long Range Planning side. We have approximately sixteen, seventeen F T E and an operating budget of two point uh four, five, six million. So why land use planning? So it's a requirement of legislation, it's governed under Part Seventeen of the Municipal Government Act. It's a core function of municipal government. Effective land use planning is an important way that municipalities ensure a high-quality life for the residents now and into the future. So the development pattern and built form of a community, it impacts the physical and mental well-being of residents, social inclusion, fiscal sustainability of infrastructure, feasibility of service delivery, economic growth opportunities, protection and preservation of the natural environment, and other elements that can contribute to the viability of a community. Land use planning involves the development of plans, bylaws and policies, processing development, applications and permits. Decision-making related to land use and development occurs in the public interest and in alignment with all legislation, council adopted policies, plans and bylaws, and industry best practices. I did show this to you at the Orientation Session, but once again, this is the Planning Framework and the Process. It has many steps, it's very layered, they each have their own significance and different information, level of detail that are provided. These are different legislation, plans, bylaws and policies, provide direction for decision-making. Where the municipality really comes in after the provincial framework is that with this intermunicipal planning framework, then into the municipal development plan, which paints with broad strokes to lay out a long-term path forward, guiding the next twenty-five years or so. Then we get more detailed as we get onto the ground with the area structure plans, shorter implementation timeframe. Providing a little bit more detail, sorry. And then we kind of get a little bit more specific as we go down that pyramid. So we've got the development permit, which is a detailed idea of what the land use will be on a very specific parcel and what the building will look like. And all these steps build upon the previous ones, none is done in isolation, and they work together to build our community. The development process includes many different people in the process, from developers, home builders, business owners and residents, to user groups and other interest groups, our neighboring municipalities and others such as provincial agencies and school boards. Our core programs and services are really about general and technical inquiries on land matters from the public and development into, industry. Undertaking statutory, non-statutory planning and amendments such as municipal development plan, area structure plans, area redevelopment plans, neighborhood structure plans and outline plans, directional plans and policies. So we've got the age-friendly strategy, affordable housing strategy, Winter City, SEP Ted. Uh, we've worked on the Transportation Master Plan, those sorts of things. We deal with growth planning and annexation, public and stakeholder engagement on these varying plans, regional planning and intermunicipal relations, subdivisions, development agreements and registered documents, which all go along with building that neighborhood. Uh, right down to, like I said, development permits, compliance certificates, we look at urban design in our commercial areas, how the buildings integrate with the public spaces around them and how people react to their environments. Really what makes Beaumont Beaumont, and how we keep that small-town charm is everything that we do. We also deal with building permits, inspections and Buildings Code Safety Compliance. Talked about this, uh, council's role, your role is to enact the land use bylaw, the M D P, all your statutory plans. You set that vision and you provide the direction for the municipality. Administration's role is to carry out decision-making within our authority, which is that subdivision authority, development authority, Safety Codes Authority. And we carry out uh decision-making in alignment with those plans and policies. The way that decision-making is delegated has an important role in making the process effective and efficient. Talked about long-range planning, they really set that vision, well, they help guide that vision for the community, making sure that the way that the community grows is sustainable and builds us towards that complete community, meets our density targets and all of our provincial requirements. They work through all of these different items, I'm not gonna list them all, cause I just talked about them. We've talked about the municipal development plan, that is a key uh cornerstone of, I guess, our planning framework, but also the municipality's planning and document framework as well. So the M D P is a bold plan with a community-built vision. Community engagement was overtaken on this plan from twenty-sixteen through to twenty-seventeen, plan was approved in twenty-nineteen. It outlines policies to accommodate growth while balancing land use priorities with cultural, social, environmental and economic considerations. These are the major themes within the land use, uh, sorry, within the M D P. All plans and policies of the municipality must align with the goals and policies in our complete community. I'm not gonna belabor what an area structure plan is, uh, but we, you know, have talked about that one a little bit. But as a reminder, an area structure plan is that neighborhood plan that guides that development of about a quarter section or more for the future subdivision and development of new neighborhoods. So administration's role in these is we guide the development to ensure the plan is created in the public interest. So that does include an opportunity there for public engagement in the creation of these plans. The area structure plan needs to consider how development is gonna phase, you know, like where services are gonna go, where it's gonna start, what those different land use mixes are for the area, how many people are gonna live there, where the roads are gonna go, and those sorts of things. And all of those are then carried forward into the later stages where the subdivision has to make sure that it responds to the area structure plan and the districting matches these different land uses that are proposed. So they all work in alignment with one another. So current planning deals with the land use bylaw, more like the rules, regulations, what happens when you actually get from the thirty-five-thousand-level foot, uh, the conceptual planning into the born nitty-gritty, what actually happens on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So they deal with the subdivisions, uh, we've talked about before, subdivisions are governed under Part Seventeen of the M G A and the subdivision regulations. We need to consider that you know, the staging works, that the servicing is good, this is where all the servicing and the engineering plans are reviewed at those different stages. We get into development agreements with landowners, proponents for the provision of developer-contributed assets where they put in the stormwater pipe, well, not stormwater, but the wastewater and the sanitary pipes, uh, the water pipes. And where all those parks go and everything else, and we get into agreements with them for that. And this all gets registered at land titles and then the lots are created, and then they get sold to people and then they get to build on them. So as I mentioned, we get into development agreements, this is a key part of the development process. Uh, it outlines everybody's roles and responsibilities and who does what, and how things get paid for, and how all these services are provided to make sure that people have what they need on those lots. We talk about development permits, so all development requires a permit unless specifically exempted under the land use bylaw. So those ones that might be exempted include temporary uses, smaller accessory uses such as decks under a certain height, uh, public and private utilities, et cetera. And development is defined as the following, which is an excavation or stockpile and the creation of either of them, a building or in addition to, or replacement or repair of a building, the construction of anything over and above them, a change of use of land or building. Uh, we've also got uh change in the intensity of use. So if you have moved that use hurting my brain, recovering from my illness and it's coming slow. So I just wanna say, it's our development permit group, development has been really busy this past year. We were anticipating with COVID that we were still gonna expect to see somewhat of a slowdown. But in twenty-twenty, we burned through quite a bit of our land supply uh in terms of subdivision and subdivided homes. So we saw residential new house permits grow by over seventy percent uh through in twenty-twenty-one over twenty-twenty. Uh, we did have some drop in our commercial projects, mostly based on the pandemic and a shortage of shovel-ready commercial land. Uh, so most of the commercial stuff that we saw was tenant improvements, uh, those sorts of things and already constructed buildings. We didn't see more shell buildings being constructed in twenty-twenty-one, but we are expecting to see more commercial uptake in twenty-twenty-two. Got our Building Services area. So they're responsible for building permits, enforcement orders and variances, uh, they undertake the building inspections. I'm gonna talk about that a little bit more here on the next slide. So Beaumont is an accredited municipality under Section Twenty-Six of the Safety Codes Act. We administer all or part of the Safety Codes Act with respect to anything, process or activity to which the code applies. So an accredited municipality must provide Safety Codes officers for the purpose of administering all or part of the S C A. And we administer the S C A through a building, Safety Codes Officer, and contracts with external agencies for electrical, plumbing and gas. As an accredited municipality, we have a Q M P, we are required to have one. It describes the safety codes and our disciplines and the extent of services that we intend to provide through our accreditation. It sets out the requirements that we must fulfill for accreditation. It talks about the number of inspections that we have, the timeliness of inspections, we're subject to a yearly internal audit and those, uh, and an external audit to be conducted by the Safety Codes Council. If we fail to comply with our Q M P, it may result in a revocation of Beaumont's accreditation and our ability to conduct our own Safety Codes inspections. It's important to note that a building permit is issued by the Safety Codes Officer for all buildings which require a permit. There is a misconception that Safety Codes officers provide quality control. When a Safety Codes Officer performs an inspection, his or her job is to determine whether that work being inspected meets the intent of the applicable code. The codes are there to provide an acceptable level of safety only, not quality. They are not responsible for quality control of construction or installation outside of the codes defined, um, the codes aspects that are defined in that applicable code. So obtaining a building permit does not differentiate whether you bought a Ford Pinto or Mercedes S U V. It merely means that you purchased a vehicle and it passed the safety inspection. The level of finishing, quality and durability of the home is up to the purchaser. This brings me to the end of my presentation, which is recent and upcoming initiatives. So in twenty-twenty-one, the department saw an overall increase in demand for current planning, Building Services, Long Range Planning. Long Range Planning had a busy year, leading age-friendly strategy, environmental master plan, and affordable housing strategy, which were approved by council in twenty-twenty-one. We were selected for incubation funding for the C M H C Housing Supply Challenge, which is aimed at reducing pre-development barriers to housing. It was an unprecedented year as the city saw an unexpected increase in residential development, leading to a large demand to quickly bring new lots online. We were working through the L R V, Area Structure Plan and Neighborhood Structure Plan, which were adopted by council. And the city saw two new neighborhoods break ground in Elon, the West Annexation Lands, and L R V in our North Annexation Lands. The city expects to see Lakeview, which is in our southeast corner of the city, break ground in twenty-twenty-two. We're working on completing the final stage of Forest Heights. And every development of the city was in some stage of the process from conceptual planning for the next phase of Colonial Estates to servicing areas such as Montrose Estates Nine and Eaglemont in anticipation of the twenty-twenty-two construction season. In twenty-twenty-two, the Planning and Development Department will undertake service review. We have the R F P uh listed on Alberta Purchasing Connection as we speak, with the aim to have that ready for council as requested by the end of Q two. We will be launching electronic permitting. We will be supporting the Innovation Business Park. We'll be undertaking detailed corridor planning study for Highway Six Twenty-Five. We're gonna continue the development of crime prevention through environmental design guidelines. As I mentioned, we're gonna complete a framework to reduce pre-development barriers for affordable housing. It's part of the C M H C Housing Supply Challenge, and if we're successful, we hope to move on to the next round of funding, just to actually develop the tool. We're going to take the Urban Agriculture Plan, we're going to support on the Utility Master Plan and Stormwater Studies, and we're gonna continue our participation in E M R B initiatives such as the Growth Plan Update Round and the Regional Transportation Prioritization Process. Any questions?
Thanks for that, um, Ms. Raymond, re- really, really good overview and, and really important um to, to provide that education to, to council. Um, as, as folks know, uh, we, we do have a set presentation time, uh, we do have our, our external guests here. So what I'm gonna do, uh, if that's okay, is, is we're just gonna pause item um, uh, four B here and we'll move to, to four C and then we'll, we'll come back for, for questions um after the, uh, after this presentation. So um, great, great overview, I just, I wanna make sure that, that council feels as though they've got time to ask the questions that they want and we're not rushed into doing that. So uh, with, with that being said, uh, I believe our guests are here, we'll move to, to item four C, Edmonton Metropolitan Region uh Presentation to Council, uh, and we have Karen Wechek here, CEO of E M R B, um, uh, ready to come speak to us. So welcome Karen, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I was listening to Kendra's presentation and thinking that there were parts of it that were the perfect setup for me. So I really appreciated uh being able to listen to that, I like, I like the map of the word map. Uh, because I, I just thought to myself, well, Kendra's just said it all, and so, you know, I can save you some time this evening, but maybe I'll still go through uh part of what I'd love to talk to you about tonight, which is uh regional, regional growth planning. And so as was mentioned, my name is Karen Wechek and I'm the CEO of the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board, and I'm joined today by Cindy LeBlanc, who is our Director of Corporate and Stakeholder Relations, and she's probably in the background, and I know she's running the slides. So I do know that uh she is here. So Cindy, we'll just get going to the next slide. Our presentation today will provide you with an overview of the E M R B, our mandate and uh the value of this very important table. Uh, I should let you know that we're delivering the same presentation to all of our member municipalities across the region as a way to really level set uh the work that we do. And so with that, I'm gonna get started and maybe I'd just say that I would welcome your questions at the end of the presentation. So who is the E M R B? Membership in the E M R B in the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board is mandatory, and it's determined by those municipalities with populations of five thousand or more. Our thirteen-member municipalities are a diverse group of six cities, four counties and three towns. With nearly ninety-five-hundred square kilometers in the heart of Alberta, our region accounts for one-third of the province's population with close to one-point-three-million citizens and about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand jobs. Our area is the second youngest and second fastest-growing metropolitan region in Canada. And um, and really with that, it makes regional planning crucial and essential. And the E M R B has one shared vision. But how do we get to this shared vision? The region has, as a whole and subregionally, has a long history of intermunicipal collaboration, whether it be voluntary or mandatory bodies, like the Alberta Capital Region Alliance or A C R A, Edmonton Global, the Tri-Region, or even the Industrial Heartland. And the outcomes have resulted in major infrastructure like the Anthony Henday. In the late nineteen-forties, we started seeing massive growth caused by the oil boom and a sense of urgency emerged around the need to plan regionally. This resulted in the establishment of the First Edmonton District Planning Commission, where membership was in fact voluntary. This resulted in the establishment of the first Edmonton District Planning Commission, where membership was in fact voluntary. In nineteen fifty-six, the McNally Commission concluded that piecemeal, that the piecemeal pattern of development that was taking place around both Edmonton and Calgary. Was inappropriate and recommended at that time that a that mandatory metropolitan planning be put in place. This leads to the first provincial mandate uh that municipalities work together to develop a regional plan. Legislation was amended in nineteen sixty-three to make the Edmonton Regional Planning Commission a mandatory regional planning body. The territory for this commission actually extended all the way out into the Yellowhead area. By the nineteen eighties, the Planning Commission is restructured to focus more on the Edmonton Metro Region and it adopts its first regional plan. And then fast forward fifteen years. In the mid nineteen nineties, a combination of the provincial government's political philosophy of the day. The economic downturn and tensions among members of the regional planning commissions. Led the government of Alberta to dissolve the commissions and devolve all planning authority back to individual municipalities. Between nineteen ninety-five and two thousand and ten, the region experienced a gap in planning policy. While at the same time, it continued to face tremendous growth and tensions between municipalities. And truly, in speaking with some of the members of the development community, it was chaos for them. They noted a time of incredible lack of uncertainty. And yet, despite this, many of the former members of the Edmonton Metro Planning Commission. Form a new voluntary body, an intermunicipal agency called the Capital Region Forum, which in nineteen ninety-seven becomes the Alberta Capital Regional Alliance or ACR. At the time, at the start of the new century, we see two really important reports commissioned by the province. First was the Hindman Report in two thousand and then the Radke Report in two thousand and seven. Both of these reports conclude that strengthening the region is not a choice, it is in fact a necessity. This prompts Premier Stalmack in two thousand and eight to establish the Capital Region Board to develop a long-term integrated growth management plan. Twenty-four municipalities make up the CRB at that time and its membership is mandatory. In late two thousand and sixteen, the Capital Region Board approved and delivered its updated regional growth plan. Reimagine, build, plan and build. And in two thousand and seventeen, while approving the updated growth plan, the government of Alberta also looked at the structure of the board. And reduced the number of members from twenty-four to thirteen, rebranding it as the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board or the EMRB as you know it today. If our history tells us anything, it is that by working together, we are better positioned to seize opportunities. And address the challenges of growth and and an integrated region. The concept of a municipal, of municipal growth management boards is well understood to be an effective way to position regions like ours, where multiple municipalities. Or in proximity to a major urban center. The EMRB is one of two provincially mandated region, regional growth boards in Alberta. There are other examples across the country, including Montreal, Toronto, Winnipeg and Vancouver. What we do is provide a blueprint and a policy framework that helps create the conditions for cost-effective growth. That maximizes economic opportunity and improves quality of life through developing growth and servicing plans. That guide planning and service delivery for the region. Develop, developing coordinating policies for regional infrastructure investment and service delivery. Ensuring efficient land use, including environmentally responsible land use planning. Providing certainty to investors and developers and promoting sustainable and and economic wellbeing and competitiveness. Enabling responsible growth means creating the conditions. That maximize cost-efficient growth and develop and implement policies for cost sharing. It includes economic development and investment, improving quality of life for our region. For our residents, planning and building for future generations. And truly fostering dynamic regional conversations that lead to new opportunities and the ability to solve problems together. The board and mandate are enabled by provincial regulation under the MGA. The board, through the mandate, the board shall promote the long-term sustainability of the Edmonton Metro Region. Ensure environmentally responsible land use planning, growth management in the efficient use of land. Develop policies regarding the coordination of regional infrastructure investment and service delivery. Promote the economic wellbeing and competitiveness of the region. And develop policies on how the board should engage the public in the growth and servicing plans that it develops. With with respect to decision-making, we strive for a consensus-based decision-making model and process. That is based on understanding and respecting various municipal perspectives. Developing a shared value proposition and outcomes. Evidence-based, data-driven decision-making. Establishing task forces and working groups that are made up of municipal experts. And enlisting subject matter experts from outside that have interest in helping the region grow. The process of establishing consensus is one of the things that I truly find most interesting. Because it's at the core of how we do our work. And I want to say that for the most part, decisions don't come to the board on a whim. Ideas and initiatives are traditionally sent to committees or task forces for further consideration before any decision is made. It's through these committees, task forces and working groups where different perspectives are shared and where we get a better systems view of the matter at hand. Through this, through this deliberative process, our members have an opportunity to share their local realities. And influence the work and refine the ideas in a way that benefits all member municipalities. But as with anything, there's always room for improvement for our members to better understand one another's local realities. And that will be one of the core focuses of, as part of the ongoing board development efforts that we have. That said, we strive for consensus. That while we strive for consensus, all decisions ultimately do require a vote at the board. And for a motion to pass out the board, it requires the support of two-thirds of the members representing two-thirds of the population. In fulfilling the board's mandate, there are other specific mandated duties, including preparing the growth plan, the servicing plan. Advising and making recommendations to the minister regarding the implementation of both. Facilitating the resolution of issues arising from the preparation and the implementation of both documents. And the development, developing and implementing policies for cost sharing, for sharing of costs for regional pros, projects in the region. While board members are appointed by virtue of their election to their respective municipal councils. When they come around the EMRB table. They are first and foremost tasked with working in the best interests of the region. As a distinct and legal, as a distinct and legal entity, the EMRB should not be viewed as another order of government. Or as an extension of each municipality, but rather as a regional body with a regional focus. A board member is not precluded from taking into account his or her municipality's best interest. Or making a decision or advancing a position that favors their municipality. So long as that municipality's best interests are not the exclusive consideration. And that the action is also consistent with the region's best interests. Truly, the EMRB deserves the best efforts of all to make it work. Consistent with the board, consistent with the vision of the board to be highly strategic and engaged. The roles and responsibilities of board members include instilling a strategic vision and inspiring a. Or, and sorry, and inspiring a compelling board vision. Fostering effective interpersonal relationships and working collaboratively with colleagues. Actively participating in board debate and discussion, demonstrating the working knowledge of the EMRB's guiding documents. Keeping up to date and informed with issues and trends that may influence the region and impact the board's mandate. Reporting on activities and decisions of the board back to respective municipal councils. And representing the board at specific events and meetings. The EMRB's annual budget is approximately three point four million dollars. The funding comes from the provincial government grant and from member municipalities. Member municipality contributions are determined on an equitable proportion-based basis. And for the city of Beaumont, that's just shy of uh thirty-four thousand dollars per year. Growth is about using our land wisely to protect our quality of life and enhance our prosperity for future generations. The EMRB's value to the region comes through focusing on issues that are regionally significant. Climate change and protecting the environment, including air, water and biodiversity. Municipal services, including public safety, infrastructure and transportation choices or solid waste. Agriculture, including stewarding the land and ensuring local food supply and local food security. And economic development and broadband. The MRB works to create conditions that that set the stage for prosperity. By enhancing investment readiness and setting the stage for economic development. Creating investor certainty through clear and consistent regulatory and policy frameworks. And by creating operational efficiencies through reducing duplication within the region. Providing a one-window access to the region and leveraging economies of scale and shared resources. The growth plan is a future-focused thirty-year plan for the region, representing our collective commitment. To working together and growing responsibly to accommodate a projected one million additional residents. And an increase of four hundred and seventy-five thousand jobs to the region. And I, I always like to pause here and and just put that into a bit of perspective. So when you think about it, we are projecting that in the next thirty or thirty-five years, we'll grow by a million people and. And four hundred and seventy-five thousand jobs. And we're currently at one point three million people, and it's taken us this long to get there. It will take us a quarter of the time to grow by another million people. And so the planning for doing that has to start now. All of those people aren't going to choose the same communities to live in. They're going to be spread throughout the region, but we have to think about things like where are we going to put the solid waste of another million people? What are the environmental impacts of another million people? How do we move the goods and services and those additional people around this region? And so that's the kind of work that this board does. And you know, the other day I was talking about this to someone and I said, really, this. The awesomeness of this work, not that, hey, this is awesome, but the gravity of this work is really quite something. And there is only one board that has the responsibility and the accountability for doing this. And I think, you know, even in my three and a half years of being here, uh, every now and then it strikes me of the importance of this work. The growth plan provides a comprehensive and an integrated policy framework for managing growth. It's not a one-size-fits-all approach, but applies the same principles, strategies and objectives in a contextually sensitive manner. The growth plan is a holistic plan that includes six interconnected policy areas. Economic competitiveness and employment, natural living systems, communities and housing, integration of land use and infrastructure. Transportation systems and agriculture, and you can see some of the benefits uh that are shown up on the screen here. The plan also includes a framework to guide implementation and monitoring and reporting. Of the region's collective process towards the outcomes, or sorry, progress towards the outcomes of this plan. And in the year ahead, we'll be initiating the five-year interim review. That is mandated through the plan and that will be informed by new census data that's current, that is about to be released uh by the federal government. With respect to our Metropolitan Region Servicing Plan or the MRSP. The MRSP supports the implementation of the growth plan by focusing on areas we can, where we can realize efficiencies in planning. For regionally significant services. Identifying and prioritizing regional infrastructure investments and identifying opportunities to coordinate the delivery of services. The work under the MRSP recognizes the fiscal realities facing us all. And that costs associated with providing infrastructure and efficient services now and for that additional one million people. And those associated four hundred and seventy-five thousand jobs will be greater than any one municipality can manage alone. It also recognizes that leveraging scales of economy. And identifying opportunities to work together will benefit taxpayers across all of our municipalities. The board's chosen to fo, to focus on the four priority service areas that you see up on the screen. These priority areas were carefully chosen from among a much broader list. And were determined to be the areas where the EMRB can have the most impact. The integrated trends, the integrated regional transportation master plan or IRTMP. Lays the groundwork for how we integrate and achieve greater efficiencies across our regional transportation network. For our growing population and reduce the impact on our environment. The process undertaken to develop the plan was evidence-based and optimizes regional networks. Reduces duplication in transportation planning and prioritizes investment in critical in transportation infrastructure. It also includes a model where you can input data to vi, to visualize different scenarios. The model can be used regionally and subregionally. Alberta Transportation was a member of the IRTMP Task Force. And by working side by side on this new twenty-five-year plan for the region, we were able to look beyond just roads. We've looked at all multimodal forms of transportation and the transportation infrastructure and hubs needed to move goods and services and people. Because of this intergovernmental collaboration, Alberta Transportation has advised. That they are using the IRTMP as a foundation to build out its own fifty-year plan for the region. And in fact, will come to the board in February to present that plan and ask the board to collaborate on building out that fifty-year plan. Another core outcome of this joint planning process is the development of the annual transportation project prioritization list. This use, this list uses a model based on data and evidence. To help prioritize infrastructure investments that are regionally significant. And that would bring the greatest benefit to citizens, businesses and industry across the region. The list is submitted yearly to the province and has grown to be an important input into the government of Alberta's capital budget process. The regional agriculture master plan or RAMP is a core piece of work to complete the growth plan and is awaiting approval by the province. Agriculture is recognized as Alberta's second-largest economic generator. And in this region, uh, we, we, we simply don't maximize that. It is expected to lead our province's economic recovery and will contribute immensely to GDP growth. RAMP is the first ever regional plan to manage land use for the future of agriculture and the agriculture sector. By ensuring producers and processors have room to grow. RAMP also included the development of a land evaluation and site assessment to a foreign region. A first such analysis to be completed on the Prairies. LISA is the tool that ensures that we have a rigorous process based on a consistent approach to identify areas of prime agricultural land. RAMP is about conserving that prime agricultural land and creating opportunities for the value, for value-added agri-food sectors to expand. As a part of the, as a part of an economic imperative study that we commissioned. We learned that there is incredible potential to create jobs and increase the region's economic prosperity. By an estimated ten billion dollars, supporting vibrant communities and economies. Seizing that economic imperative of diversification and growing the value-added agriculture and agri-food sectors is a massive opportunity for this region. The Shared Investment for Shared Benefit Framework isn't, is, is an investment evaluation framework and model. For quantifying and qualifying regionally significant investments, investment opportunities through the sharing of costs. Which may include resources, land, data and expertise, among other assets, and of course, sharing in the benefits that come from that. The SISB supports the work of the board by enhancing the economic competitiveness of the region. And provides opportunities to increase and enhance regional collaboration. That could include other orders of government, regional stakeholders and private investors. I also wanted to mention regional broadband. In two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, the board undertook a comprehensive environmental scan of the state of broadband in the region. Investing in critical infrastructure in the form of high-speed internet. Is essential to ensure our region is recognized as globally economically competitive. To attract investment, business and talent. And is critical to ensuring a high quality of life and equal opportunity to all of our residents. And I know that as we make our way through this pandemic, we want to make sure that our residents have the access to. Healthcare and education and are able to run their businesses in a manner that keeps them viable. The report identified issues of accessibility and connectivity throughout the region and builds the case for addressing the gaps as a priority. The report highlighted broadband as an essential service. And quantified the economic benefit associated with addressing critical gaps regardless of where residents live and work in the region. The report has caught the attention of national and international private investors because of the data that you can find in the report. Regional data is a tremendous asset that we can and should better leverage. I'd also like to talk about housing. Of course, our priorities aren't static and these have changed over time as directed by the board. If the last four years were focused on transportation, agriculture and shared investment for shared benefit. The board has previously tackled other issues, including housing diversity. In two thousand and four, in thirteen, the board released Our Affordable Future. A report that looked at housing choices across the region to better understand the de, demand and supply gap. It found that housing choices are somewhat limited and do not address the diversity of housing needed today and in. and do not address the diversity of housing needed today and in the future, and proposed another, a number of plans and frameworks. Based on the discussions uh, prior to the election related to ESG and in particular around the S or social implications, I expect that we'll talk a little bit more about housing in our next upcoming strategic planning session. The Regional Evaluation Framework or the REF is the board's mechanism to ensure municipal planning is consistent with the growth plan. The growth plan recognizes that member municipalities are unique and have different planning frameworks and policies to implement the growth plan at a local level. The REF takes into consideration the uniqueness of each municipality and allows flexibility in how members approach implementation while ensuring municipal statutory planning adequately aligns with the principles and policies of the growth plan. The existence of the REF provides greater certainty for municipalities and uh, the development community. I'd like to talk next about GIS and, and about key performance interest indicators. The Regional Geographic Information Service or EMERGIS was first approved by the board in two thousand and nine and enables improved collection, maintenance, and sharing of regionally significant data between member municipalities. It's a function that supports regional decision-making and that aims to expand regional capacity to deliver geographically-based information and services that support sustainable land use, public transit, and housing decisions through the collaboration of the board and its members. With respect to our KPIs, when the region's new growth plan was approved, it included twenty-six unique key performance in- indicators to keep our growth on track and ensure our regional planning is responsive to our changing realities. These KPIs are aligned with the outcomes of the growth plan and the six policy areas. The majority of the KPIs rely on data from the federal census. And as I mentioned earlier, we will be assessing the KPIs as part of the five-year interim review of the growth plan, which we'll be undertaking over the next couple of years. I also like to point out that the EMRB is a place where many ideas, regional ideas are born and can be discussed. At times, these ideas have given rise to new uh, regional bodies and initiatives. And certainly, uh, EMRB is, is a proud partner and, and uh, was a place, a, a launching pad for both Edmonton Global and uh, the Edmonton Metropolitan Transit Services Commission. A region by design is what I'd like to talk about next. As you'll see, have seen throughout the presentation, and I hope you understand that our work is really and truly legacy work. Last year, the board approved its tw- twenty-two, twenty-one to twenty-four strategic plan called a Region by Design. This plan sets forward a new foundation and framework for determining our strategic direction and focuses on three specific priorities. One is enabling the responsible growth across the region. We've committed to develop and implement holistic growth and servicing plans to achieve the, to achieve the fifty-year vision that will attract and retain investment and talent, ensure sustainability, enhance efficiencies, seed economic development, and elevate the quality of life for citizens across the region. Committing to ESG practices and policies is priority number two. We have taken the intentional step to embed an environmental, social, and governance lens in the plans, policies, and practices guiding the work of the board to meet the triple bottom line and ensure sustainable communities for future generations. And the third is to collaborate to enhance outcomes across the region. We will seek opportunities that will leverage economies of scale, find efficiencies, and enable member municipalities to work smarter together. And of course, to engage in key regional partners, uh, to engage our key regional partners and traditional and non-traditional stakeholders in this work. And so you might think to yourself, well, why did the board approve a new strategic plan nearing the end of its term? Really, it's about the way we look at strategic planning. Strategic planning is not static. You don't put a plan on the shelf and walk away from it. What we thought about was, was really about taking what we've learned over the last term of the board and building a foundational piece by which then this new board could come in and really determine from these key priorities what its strategic initiatives would be over the next term of the board. It's really that kind of a foundation. And so with that, I think that's the end of my presentation. I have to say that I'm very sorry that, that I couldn't be there today. Up until uh, the end of December, I had the opportunity to be in all of our member municipalities and deliver the, the presentation in per- in person. And, and I know up until last week, I was planning to visit Beaumont, but um, safety of, of everyone is paramount. And uh, you can be sure that I'll find my way to Beaumont in, in the near future. And, and as many of you know, I've, I spend quite a bit of time uh, there in your community just because I love it so much and uh, and because it's important to come and uh, and meet with the mayor and, and uh, with your CAO and, and spend some time learning about what's important to Beaumont. I always say that um, the region looks the same from the thirteenth floor, the eleventh floor of the Bell Tower. And so getting out to uh, member communities is, is really important to me. I'm happy to take questions. Thank you for your time.
Great. That, thank you, Karen, for that really comprehensive overview uh, of such an incredibly important board and particularly obviously with, with new members um, uh, here with us and across the region. Really, really crucial to get a good baseline of, of where everything is at with, with this board. And, and really on behalf of Beaumont, thanks for your leadership uh, as the CEO there. And I, you've managed through multiple challenges and there's going to be many more coming up. But we, we really appreciate that and we are looking forward to having you back out on Beaumont for sure. Um, last time I think we were on a, last time I seen you, we were on a little pink bus, but I won't go any further than that on that topic. Um, let's uh, let's open it up for uh, for questions from uh, from, from the floor here. Yeah, I got to Councilor Anukirk.
Yeah, thank you, Karen, for uh, the presentation tonight. Um, for me, um, it's kind of a, I don't know, let's call it a hardball question off the front end here. Um, what's the plan to address the rural-urban divide in the region? Um, the water, the water cooler chatter uh, that we hear and the different boards and commissions that we attend um, often sees split votes and uh, you know, differing opinions or, you know, based upon, you know, rural or urban status. Um, you know, you talked about thirteen municipalities, six cities, four counties, and three towns. So there's a lot of municipal diversity there and, and competing priorities, right? So um, you know, by virtue of being in the region, uh, everyone comes together for the board. And just wanting, wondering if you could speak to the ability of the EMRB to bring together these urban and rural voices, consider everyone, make them feel, feel valued and see the value in the board. So could you speak to that a bit? Thank you.
Absolutely. It's, it's actually, you know, a topic that's truly, obviously, very important. And I think um, you know, it takes, it takes listening and understanding to start with. And, and as you've talked about providing the opportunity for, for dialogue. And so one of the things that we learned when we were starting the Shared Initiative for Shared Benefit Initiative was that there's an assumption out there that municipalities know each other and they talk to each other. And that you know, um, you know, the opportunities and challenges of your neighbors and of other municipalities across the region, and that really just isn't the case. Um, and so one of the things that we did was we, we had a session that was um, really about understanding local realities. And so each member municipality had the same set of questions that they had to answer, and it started to provide perspective. And you know, it's, it's amazing to me that that exercise, I think, took place in two thousand and nineteen. It continues to be talked about as one of the key exercises that we did. So you know, um, in all of your calendars, on January twenty-first, uh, there was to be a region-wide event where we were going to actually begin a morning with that. Because I think it's more, it's, it's important not just for board members to understand what's happening and the challenges that each other have, but for everyone to do that. And so um, that will be part of the strategic planning session, actually, on, that will take place on February twenty-fifth. We'll start with that, but we'll also bring that back. Now, that's not the only thing, of course. It's about providing opportunities for really good dialogue. So one of the other things that we did in the review of how, of our structure and through setting up our new board charter was we actually uh, created a committee of the whole. Because what we also found out was we don't have a space where board members can come together and actually have really thorough discussions without having to worry about motions and voting. So it has been a really fantastic exercise. And I believe the one that is coming up next week will be our third. And you know, it's amazing to me, uh, in the first meeting, it was, it was quite a bit of fun because I don't think board members really knew what that was going to look like. And by the end of that, the feedback that we had was that these were really worthwhile exercises. Because again, it comes with that talking and that understanding and that, and that open, that listening. So I think those are some, some of the first uh, kind of concrete things that I would say that, that we're really going to work towards when it comes to um, ensuring shared understandings. The other thing that I'd like to say is that that consensus decision-making that I talked about is actually quite important. When you look at the, the big initiatives that pass through the EMRB, they don't pass through with eight to five or nine to four votes. They're usually, uh, for the most part, passed unanimously. The MRSP was passed unanimously. Uh, SISB, I think, was a vote that was, um, it might have been eleven to two. Um, the IRTMP passed unanimously, RAMP passed twelve to one. So it's not that there are these big policies and plans that are underway that aren't getting the full support of the board. But I think that part of it comes with, and how do we get there and get even stronger at this, is putting that time in upfront. And so I hope that um, you know, you'll see that kind of change. And of course, it also, um, we can set the conditions. You know, it's my job to create the conditions for that great dialogue to, to happen. But it's, it's up to board members to take that kind of, that bull by the horn, so to speak, and, and really engage in those meaningful conversations and learn and understand one another.
Steve, I'll, I'll defer to, I think the mayor wanted to, to jump in on top of that answer. Um, so I'll, I'll pass over to the mayor here.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Steve, for the courtesy. Um, I agree with what Karen has said. Uh, so a couple of key things I want to mention briefly on this topic is simply that in the EMRB now, half the membership are brand-new mayors. And that creates a huge opportunity to do some, some offensive ending from the past, quite frankly, and I think to build new relationships. Part of my job as the mayor on this EMRB representing Beaumont is to make sure Beaumont is a leader on the EMRB and getting involved with EMRB in a very wholehearted manner. Part of my gratitude and part of my strategy is to meet all the mayors individually, which I've been doing the last couple of weeks and will do the next com- coming weeks, to build relationships with those mayors individually. It's harder to understand people and their perspective. You only see them once every three months in an EMRB meeting. You don't talk to them between those meetings. So I do believe the last thing Karen said about um, reaching out as board, as board members, being mayors, uh, that's a big part of my job in the region besides representing Beaumont locally here. So I, I agree with the concern that there's some work to be done, and I'll do my share and make sure Beaumont's a leader in that area. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Bill. Uh, Steve, did you have further question there?
Uh, if, yeah, uh, big, big picture, Karen. COVID aside, uh, what do you think the biggest challenge of the EMRB is in two thousand and twenty-two?
I think, I, I think there's a couple of things that we need to think about. Um, we, we really need to think about how we will um, apply that ESG lens on our work. And so there are some things that I think are important for us in each one of those uh, specific categories. Uh, there's a couple of motions that are coming forward to the board related to climate change. And I think, you know, we haven't applied consistently and with rigor the climate change agenda, the climate change lens to this work. I think that's one thing. Uh, I think the other is really around um, the social agenda. Um, we need to, in a very meaningful way, think about how we will engage the indigenous communities in this region. And we haven't done that yet, right? It hasn't been a board priority. It's been priorities of different member municipalities, but it hasn't been a board priority. And so I don't know if I would call those necessarily challenges as I would opportunities and really um, priorities. You know, those, but, but there are things that we, we actually have to look at and, and we have to address. Um, the other thing, I'll be quite frank, um, is that we are facing um, a million-dollar cut to our budget from the provincial grant. So the, the provincial grant back in twenty fifteen, sixteen, or sixteen seventeen was, in fact, three million dollars a year. And it's going down to one million this year, and it's been cut from two million to one million in the last three years. And so we have to think about the financial sustainability and viability of the organization. And that's something that we've been talking about in the Audit and Finance Committee. Um, that being said, we have done, I think, yeoman's service on our budget and have main, and, and project to maintain municipal contributions at the level that they're at now. It's just really about how do we do our work? How do we do it differently? How do we prioritize? And I think, you know, part of the, this, part of the, the mandate of this board will be to think about that sustainability and, and for us to have those kinds of conversations. And in fact, that will be one of the conversations at the March Committee of the Whole Meeting is uh, is the financial sustainability and viability of the organization. So I think, you know, from my perspective, those would be the things that are um, the ones that are top of mind. We must do uh, the five-year interim review that's mandated, and that will take uh, some time to do. And that'll give us a sense of whether or not we have to reassess and realign and pivot anywhere. But those would be the things that I think um, we have to get a handle on in two thousand and twenty-two. And that will in fact lead us uh, to think about what will, what the next three years following that will look like.
Yeah, that's awesome. I look forward to Beaumont providing input on those opportunities. I think it's going to be an exciting year for that in two thousand and twenty-two. Thank you very much.
Thank you for those questions.
All right. Thanks, Steve. I've got a Councilor Barnhart there.
Thank you very much, Chair, and good to see you again, Karen. I haven't seen you in a long time and it's great. You're doing such great work and I, I do totally agree with the big-picture idea and how important EMRB is and how tough that job is. Um, but in the interest of time, because I know there's, there's lots still on our agenda today and I appreciate all the time you've given us already. Two areas I want to talk about. One is housing. I want to underline what you said about how important that is in the region and not, not just the physical building of the housing, but the affordability and the, the, um, the different options that need to be available in our region and how and where we put all of those different options. My, my concern, and I'll cut right to the chase, is that when uh, EMRB did the housing assessments and collected the data that was collected, I think it's going back now more than five years. It's really, really old data. And sitting on the, uh, as the chair right now, the, the, the Duke Regional Housing Board, just talking today about that, we can't wait very long. We're going to have to go out on our own here and do some data gathering because we, we have to put in applications for grants. And in order to get those grants, we have to have the data. So I don't know if there's anything you can do to speed up that process, probably not a whole lot because you're doing a strategic planning. But I just want to kind of let you know that we are desperate for updated information uh, in order to get the grants we want to get from the federal government in particular. So I, I don't know if you have a comment to that or just want to put that in the back of your head.
I, I do have a comment. You know, it's interesting because as I mentioned, you know, and as Councilor Barnhart, you know, uh, because you were so involved in the board uh, last time with, with RAMP, housing wasn't a priority of the last board. It was something that was left behind. And so you're right, our data is old. That report goes back to twenty thirteen. And so I think, you know, it's important for um, this conversation and for mayor dialogue to hear this because that will be the conversation that we have to have on February twenty-fifth, that strategic planning. And, and what it is that we think we want to do around housing. And I would, the, the other thing that I would say to you, and, and this is um, a pet peeve of mine and I think a huge opportunity regionally, is, is data. I am a huge fan of keeping data current, of ever-grading data. Because when you don't, you spend a ton of time and money trying to catch up to make decisions that we could make very quickly. And so I hear you on that. I don't, I don't know, quite frankly, and I'm just being honest, how much help will be given the timeline and, and, you know, and the board will really have to make a decision on what its priorities are. And, and all I can say is that, you know, housing is on the radar screen. It certainly was the topic of discussion um, in July at the Committee of the Whole Meeting on the review of the growth plan. And I know that it continues to, to bubble up as something that we need to look at. And certainly, when we pass the, the new strategic plan in April, the S in ESG, that, that the topic around that S was housing-related. So I share your sense of urgency. I understand it. Um, I just can't make you any promises and I, and I don't know what the outcomes will be, but uh, thank you for.
Do appreciate that you raised. Do appreciate that you raised it as well. And I just want to add to that, that there's a financial concern here. Because we miss out on grants in this region because we do not have that up-to-date data. So just to put that out there. And last but not least, I couldn't leave you go without saying something about Ramp. And one of the things that you and I talked about, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, time is just kind of like, I don't know what time it is anymore. But we talked about raising the awareness of all of the stakeholders and, and all of the council members, not just the, the mayors and the board, but around the importance of agriculture in our region. And what did Ramp actually do? What does it mean? There was so much information that I learned from that, that I can't begin to share the, the details of. Other experts other than me could do a much better job of that. So you and I talked about maybe a agricultural-based conference or awareness building. And I don't know if you have that as well as one of the things you might be raising at the strategic planning session.
So I don't think I'll raise it at the strategic planning session because that's really about high-level strategic initiatives. But what I will say is that the conversations that we're having internally is how do we get our information out? And so, given COVID and the uncertainties around COVID, trying not to wait for the perfect opportunity like a conference, but maybe start by doing things like even webinars. And I'll tell you what, when we did them around the regional broadband, I couldn't believe the attendance. And so I think that we just generally, whether it's with Ramp or any of the other initiatives, we have, need to think about how we undertake information sharing. I think the other thing and, and, you know, it, it just came up in the last question will now be about, about the budget and money. And so with the grant being cut by that million dollars, it's, it's about thinking about how we talk about this work. But again, you know, there's opportunities to partner with organizations like Edmonton Global because of course agriculture is one of the four pillars with Edmonton Global, and they were certainly a partner at the table. So not lost for sure, Counselor Barnhart. And what I can't wait for is provincial approval of the document, which we're still awaiting. But I, I have my fingers crossed that maybe that could happen in the not-too-distant future. Might have an email exchange on that. But, you know, those are the kinds of things that help not only raise the profile of the work, but the understanding of what it means to do this kind of legacy work and legacy planning. And thank you for your time on that because everybody thought that would be a two-year endeavor and it was a four-year endeavor. So appreciate, appreciate your commitment.
Thank you very much and good to see you. Stay well.
You too.
Thanks, Kathy. And it looks like we've come to the end of the broader questions here. I did just want to quickly acknowledge Karen, you touched on the indigenous piece. You know, it's, it's not lost on me that, you know, when you show up the map, there, there are four first station reserves within that, within those borders. Many, many indigenous people living within, within this area. And obviously the Métis homeland as well. And, you know, you talk about some of those, those broader, those larger strategies, you know, that we, we have to take into, into account. So I'm glad that that is on your radar. And I really encourage, I know this is a municipal board, but I really encourage us to, to look at that and how those partnerships can work together. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, that you brought that up. So thank you for that. And with that, what we will say, we'll say goodbye, Karen. Hopefully, last time we see you on a screen, next time we'll see you in person. But thank you very much for the presentation today and informing everyone here and looking forward to continuing to work with, with EMRB. So thank you.
Thank you for your time. Really appreciate it. And I will see you all soon.
Great. So, so with that, folks, we don't need a motion to, to come out of that agenda item. What I will do is call a, a well-deserved break here. We'll come back at seven oh five PM. And so once we come back, we'll, we'll loop back to, to item three B to answer questions from Kendra and the Planning Department. So we'll see you back here in, in ten minutes. Let's pull the meeting back to order at seven oh five PM. And we, we did take a little break from item four B to, to get through an external presenter. So we're going to go back to that for the Department Overview Report, Planning and Development. So we had Ms. Raymond present to us a really great overview of the, of the department. And I just, just wanted to, to speak generally around this. I'm really excited about this initiative. And thank you, Mike, and Administration for bringing this forward. You know, the, the more we, we know about Administration, the better as counselors. So thank you for that. But, but now I'll, I'll open it up for, for questions of Councilwoman Raymond and, and her team. This would be great if we, we delayed it all. I do have some questions. So there we go. Well, I think the mayor beat you to the pump there, Steve. So Bill, we'll go with you, mate.
Sorry, Steve, we got the buzzer there quicker on this time for once. So just a quick question, Ms. Ray, if you don't mind, please. In your presentation, we talked about a couple of things, or one hit on one thing on people's minds in social media recently about, you know, quality control, the buildings, our builders in Beaumont, that's part of the thing. And you mentioned it in your presentation, I think Ms. Broome did as well, too, at some point, that if you can clarify, Building Inspector versus Safety Codes Officer, they are two separate entities, are they not, I believe? Are they the same? Can you clarify, please? Just to be, just to clear on the presentation, please?
Thank you. Through the chair to Mayor Danilak, they are actually one and the same. So Building Inspector and the Safety Codes Officer in a building discipline are the same person. But a Safety Codes Officer is a broader term that can encompass a plumbing inspector, a gas inspector. But when we use them in the Beaumont context, we're typically talking about a building safety codes inspector or the building inspector.
Okay, thank you. I just want to get that clarified. I, I do think there's a perception in the public that they're two separate positions, two separate responsibilities. I thought they kind of were until about a year ago when I got tuned in and some information from Administration on that. So just to clarify, if anybody listening at home, that they are one of the same position. Good for now, Mr. Chairman. I'll read the floor to Mr. Van Newkirk. I may have a follow-up question in a moment. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Steve, your teammate.
Yeah, thank you. For me, lots, lots of information, lots of good information in there about, you know, about planning development, planning and development, because that's what the presentation is all about. I'm going to just take a, a second to reach across from planning development to your friends at the Economic Development Team and the Communications Team. And just wondering, what is the, let, let me read what I wrote here because I wrote it for a reason. I'm interested in learning more about the internal connections between planning and development, our Economic Development Team and our Communications Team. First question would be, how do these groups work together and what is the trigger for you to work together?
Great question. So through the chair to Counselor Van Newkirk. We work as a cross-functional team all the time. We're constantly reaching out to one another on different leads that come through or different inquiries that we're getting. And we're always following up with one another and working with one another. The Communications Department is structured in such a way that they provide like a communications partner level of support. So we reach out to our comms department when we need help with issues briefings or getting communications out the door or those sorts of things. They help us with news releases and whatnot. So it's usually when we, they either flag something needs communications attention, they're the one watching social media, they're watching what's happening with the various different news outlets as well. So they will provide that back to us or we'll reach out to them, but it's definitely been a very fluid relationship. So.
Yeah, that's great. And I think the, the takeaway from there and why I asked the question is because I know that that happens and I hear that that happens. And now you're telling everyone that that happens, right? So I think that's very important for everyone who's listening to understand is that, you know, just because we're getting a planning and development presentation would not mean that there are not internal links to our other important teams and that folks don't work together. So thank you for that. Second, second question, second kind of theme. As a counselor, I field questions from residents, business owners, home builders, commercial builders and developers. Specifically, if and when we have someone wanting to invest money in Beaumont and perhaps something that they're proposing is not approved through the planning and development process for whatever reason. What does the city do to encourage or help the applicant determine what they could do instead? Or, you know, like what we don't want to see is we don't want to see those investment dollars turned down, turned away and sent seven kilometers north or twelve kilometers west, right? So, you know, so when someone has money they want to spend in Beaumont and what they proposed didn't quite fit something or somewhere, how are we making sure that we can still make good on those investment dollars in Beaumont? What, what do we do to help that out?
Thank you for that question. So through the chair again to Counselor Van Newkirk. We do work with applicants to determine what their vision is for their ultimate project and figure out how we can get that to a yes. And maybe that's a tweak here or a tweak there or working through to figure out like, what are those different sticking points and kind of guiding them towards, well, maybe this isn't going to kind of work. But have you thought about maybe this option or maybe this area might be a better fit for what you want to do versus it being over here? And we kind of try to work with them. It's really a partnership that we do with our development industry. And that again, goes back hand in hand to how we work with economic development. You know, going out chasing new leads on different investment opportunities that would come to Beaumont and working towards having that be successful and ultimately for them to choose to invest in Beaumont. So we're definitely working with people to have successful outcomes. I would say most of the time they are successful. It's pretty rare that it, it doesn't work out. But it's usually not because we couldn't make the regulations work. It's usually something having to do on their end that they weren't able to make that happen for whatever reason.
Yeah, you bet. And, and it's a two-way street, right? The, the city can, can try, but you need, like you say, you need, you need a willing partner as well, right? So that's important. So, okay, thank you. That's my questions for right now.
Thanks, Steve. I'll go to Councilor Barnhart.
Thank you, Chair. A question about the, what I consider to be one of the significant changes is the addition of the ability to, to have more secondary suites, granny flats, apartments over garages. That, that, that's, that's new and different for, for Beaumont. That's, that's really taking us in a, in a very innovative way, building up the density, et cetera. I, I guess the question is, how are we letting residents know that that's now an opportunity for them? And is it an opportunity for everyone? Or is it only in certain districts? And just how are we going to roll that out? You know, I'm looking at it myself from a single detached property. Makes sense to me, given my, my age and stage in life. But I also don't know whether it's even possible here. So I'm guessing if I don't know, a lot of other people don't know. So how are we going to roll that out? And it kind of ties in with Councilor Van Newkirk talking about communication, working together, et cetera. You're on the residential side.
Through the chair to Counselor Barnhart, I'm not really going to take this question. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Broome here in a moment. But we have had granny suites and secondary suites within our land use bylaw since 2013. And when I say granny suites, I mean a garage suite. So we didn't have a lot of uptake until this last land use bylaw. You know, things kind of take time to, to build out and for people to get accustomed to them. But I think sometimes we're, you know, maybe guilty of not seeing the praises that our land use bylaw and its innovative approach really offers people and that, and that flexibility and that opportunity. So that is something that we have flagged as needing to work through is some public education materials really to help people understand. And realistically, this bylaw got passed in 2019 and we've had COVID and we didn't have in-person stuff happening. So some of that, you know, if we were to have, say, like coffee chats or different things, like come meet us, talk about, you know, secondary suites or, so you want to do this with your house? Like we could do those sorts of things. We just, some of those have been backburnered for right now. But I'm going to let Ms. Broome talk about that because we've definitely had that on our radar for some work planned here.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Kendra. Through the chair to Counselor Barnhart, I think Kendra covered a lot of really good points there. It's been part of our bylaw, but when we, when we looked at reviewing our land use bylaw, we asked the question, well, why aren't we seeing enough uptake? And some of the barriers that we looked at removing was making it permitted in more areas. We had some challenges with parking requirements, which can really make a project unfeasible. So part of the reason why we were wanting to get in front of the committee tonight is to showcase the bylaw to tell everybody what the bylaw can do. We have a number of new faces on the committee and council, but also for the public. The next phase is really to promote and educate what the bylaw can do. We started with the building community, though. That's where we've been focusing a lot of our, our attention. And they're really starting to get excited about how creative the bylaw allows them to be. And so the next phase will be to reach out to the public and, and make sure that they can understand the opportunities that the bylaw provides them now and over time. So that's something that we are going to be looking at this year.
Thank you. I'm really looking forward to seeing that. Thank you.
Yeah, before we go back to, to Mayor and Councilman Newkirk, anyone else have any questions? Kind of close our run one here. It doesn't look like it. I think, Bill, you beat him again. So you're up there, champ.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a quick follow-up, if you don't mind, Ms. Raymond or Ms. Broome on the last point. That back in, you mentioned 2013, we were allowing land use bylaw to have secondary or granny suites in certain areas. So this is nothing, something that's been new, but it's come more to the forefront in the last, say, year to eighteen months, where some opportunities by, by homeowners have done that to simply add more suites to their property or build right from a get-go additional suites into, into the building itself. So this is nothing you already knew. It's more, more to the forefront now. Can you maybe re-explain what you said there a moment ago? It did to my interest there, if you don't mind recapping, if you could, please. Is my question clear? Perhaps it's not. It is clear to me, but maybe it's articulated very well, possibly. I see smiles, so I'm going to assume I need to articulate. So can you then, no, you're okay?
Through the chair to Mayor Danilak. No, I think Kendra and I were just not sure who wanted to be the lucky person to answer. So you're right, they were possible in our old land use bylaw. But like I mentioned in my, in my presentation, the traditional way that land use regulation was done could be prescriptive and not as flexible as what we've seen. And so while there might be someone interested in doing a suite in one area, unfortunately, it wasn't allowed in their district. And so they would have had to go and redistrict to do that, which as a homeowner, that's not a process people are familiar with or, or willing to undertake. It's costly and timely. So Counselor Barnhart's question earlier about whether she could do it in her home, I can almost guarantee that she can. It's, it's possible as long as she can meet the regulations and she can meet the building code. So it's basically, you know, it's partly that the market is seeing the demand for these types of suites and different types of housing, and people are getting more comfortable with them. But it's also that we've largely gotten out of the way and, and broke down some of those barriers that were really preventing us from seeing any uptake.
Thank you. Quick follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mick.
Okay, it's a quick follow-up. It's too deep in the weeds, as Mr. Chairman. Tell me, I'll withdraw the question. But if you don't mind, quickly, if I could, Ms. Brahm or Ms. Raymond, in a situation where you have a cul-de-sac, let's say, ten or twelve homes, where I happen to live on one of fourteen homes. And if, for example, some home builder, homeowners decide to put a secondary suite or granny suite in their home, there is limited on-street parking in most cul-de-sacs as we know. So is there a mechanism that if one house decides to do a granny suite and requires extra parking on the street, and then the second house decides to do it, is there a mechanism we can realize that you can't have too many of those in that cul-de-sac? Or else you have no, no more parking and the space, space will be limited? So if that's too deep in the weeds, I'll withdraw, Mr. Chair. But if that can be answered, just a quick, a quick answer, I would appreciate that. Thank you, and I'll yield the floor.
Yeah, thanks. And, and I, I think I'll leave it to Ms. Bro. If you can answer it quickly, great. If not, we can pull it out and, and answer as a council inquiry. So I'll leave it to you and feel free to, to differ.
Either way is fine.
Through the chair to Counselor Danilak. I, or sorry, Mayor Danilak. I think, you know, anecdotally, we touch base with municipal enforcement quite frequently. And we ask them, you know, are you seeing parking complaints in areas that are seeing these suites? Anecdotally, they're not. I think what we would like to do is take a look at, you know, now that we're actually seeing some uptake, are we having challenges? Right now, we've received very few complaints about any secondary suites in the city compared to the number that we've seen go in this year. So I mean, I think part of that is people don't even really realize they're there. It looks just like a single-family house, and that's kind of the beauty of it. But having said that, if we were to see challenges with parking, we have other mechanisms to enforce them. And we're continuously monitoring to see, you know, what, what are the impacts of our bylaw? And particularly as we're seeing changes in the way that our neighborhoods are building out.
Thank you. That's a efficient answer. Thank you very much.
I, I would just add that I think part of that challenge could be what, what Councilman Newkirk brought up before in terms of, you know, the residents not knowing where to, to, to direct some of those concerns to, so they don't quite get registered. Steve, do you have a quick question? We want to move on to get Curtis on the hot seat here. But I'll, I'll pass it up to you and then we'll, we'll close this one. Um Steve, do you have a quick question? And we want to move on um to get Curtis on the hot seat here, um but I'll pass it up to you and then we'll we'll close this one down.
Uh very quick, what document addresses required street widths in Beaumont?
Through the Chair to councillor Van Newkirk, the street widths are defined within the general design standards.
Thank you.
That was quick. All right, um I'll uh I'll ask uh the clerk to to put up the the motion to to receive that that presentation as information. And is there, Steve, you still got your hand up? You asked the most questions, so I'll uh I'll uh defer to you if you don't mind making this motion, right?
Yeah, you bet. I moved that the committee of the whole received the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two Planning and Development Department overview report as information. Thank you.
All right, I'll uh I'll call the question on that one. There we go. We've got the unanimous there. So thank you very much, TK and Kendra for for going through that. And um as I mentioned, really, really good department uh overview there for us. Um so that uh moves us over um to item four D uh in our agenda. So another department overview, this time uh finance. And so I believe we have Curtis come on down and he's on screen here. Sir, Curtis, over to you, mate.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, committee. Uh we have the city clerk will be running the slides for me. We just want to be as cognizant about my rural internet connection as we can. So uh we'll have that uh managed by the city clerk. Uh once again, I'm Curtis de Blanco. I'm the Director of Finance for the City of Beaumont. And thanks for the opportunity to present to the committee tonight, a department overview on the wonderful and interesting world that is the finance department. Uh next slide, please. So this report and presentation uh provides the committee with an overview of the fi- of finance and highlights the department's services and programs. As well as discusses upcoming initiatives and focus areas for twenty twenty-two. Next slide. So shown here is the finance team of uh a group of amazing and hardworking individuals. Our department provides uh financial expertise, information, guidance and advice on day-to-day operational matters to council, the CAO office. City departments and external stakeholders. The department also develops financial policies and procedures that assist council and guide administration in shaping the direction of the municipality. This ensures value for tax dollars and adherence to accountability standards and practices. The finance department includes eight full-time positions, one part-time position, and has an annual operating budget of one point one million. Next slide, please. So shown here are the first of four of seven key service areas within the department. Accounting is tasked with the overall financial record keeping for the organization. This includes daily bookkeeping and recording of transactions, financial accounting to ensure our general ledger and statements are compliant with. Uh public sector accounting standards or PSAS. Management or cost accounting to ensure we're properly costing services Beaumont delivers. And treasury and cash management. Cash management to ensure there are funds available to meet the obligations that the city's treasure and that the city's treasury is invested properly. The financial reporting service area is highly related to accounting, but is focused on producing financial deliverables. Most notably, the year-end financial statement, once again, to be uh prepared in accordance with those public sector accounting standards. The statement is required to be audited by an independent auditor on an annual basis, and this is reported to council in the spring. The year-end audit is one of the largest annual projects for finance, with the other obviously being the budget. Other programs and services within this service area are quarterly reporting. Reporting to internal management and other compliance reporting such as grant reporting and the financial information turn. Information return, which is also required by municipal affairs. Next, assessment and taxation, although not the most popular service area that the city offers, is crucial for the city to provide the services it does. Manages the contract with this, the city's municipal assessor who conducts assessment on all property in the city and provides the data to city administration. This assessment data of the cities are viewed, audited by the provinces, by the province to ensure accuracy as well as to determine equalized assessment. This assessment data is then used to calculate the city's property tax rate, which is sometimes referred to as the mill rate. The rate is required for requisition taxes such as school and housing, and if required, additional items like supplementary tax or local improvements. The revenue required to calculate these rates is determined as part of the budget process. Next, revenue services looks after all other non-tax revenue, including utility billing, childcare, recreation and all other revenue the city receives. Further, this area is tasked with managing customer accounts, payment receipts and collections. Next slide, please. Procurement overseas purchasing and procurement for good services and construction contracts for the city. This is one area we'll be bolstering this year through further centralization within the finance department. Many of these functions are looked after by the individual departments, with the exception of accounts payable. With an oversight and compliance on the purchasing policy provided by finance. However, through further centralization, we'll aim to improve efficiency and purchasing power, as well as free up administrative capacity for other city departments. Budget and financial planning, this is an area the new council is now familiar with, having gone through the first recent budget process. This is a future-focused area that plans and administers the development of the city's annual budget. And financial plans for the city's operating, utility, operating and capital budgets. This is an all-year process that typically be- begins in the summer with the identification of priorities. Results in the approved budget, which is required before December thirty-first. And then culminates in the following spring with the budget amendment, which is required to set the tax rate. This area also monitors performance and provides guidance to administration and council on how to achieve objectives within budget parameters. Finally, financial analysis offers a plethora of ad hoc analyses and forecasting required by city departments. Or as directed by city council in order to make informed, fact-based decisions that are financially prudent for the city. Next slide. Finance brings a consistent slate of cyclical reports to council on an annual basis, including quarterly reports, the audited financial statements. The budget and subsequent amendments, as well as both the property tax and fees and charges by law. These all occur on a periodic basis, be it annual or quarterly. Next slide. So three priority initiatives or focus areas for uh finance for twenty twenty-two are the implementation of priority-based budgeting. As you well know, the evolution improvement of the budget process for the city will continue in twenty twenty-two. Through the preliminary implementation of priority-based budgeting principles. This will better allow council and administration to prioritize services. Provide transparency of priorities and service impact and increase accountability for results. Work on this has already commenced, and the expectation is to have a robust service and program inventory by the end of Q two. Second, the review and centralization of purchasing. The key goal for the department is to do so and pro- or centralize these functions within finance. In the past, what, as I alluded to before, much of these activities were undertaken by the various departments with guidance provided by finance. Um the department will be undertaking a template and document review to ensure compliance with the relevant statutes and trade agreements. As well as implementing updated processes, procedures and system integrations to streamline purchasing for the organization. Lastly, financial or enhanced financial reporting, as you all know, quarterly reporting to council was implemented in twenty twenty. And has enabled council to receive quarterly updates on the financial status of the city. The department seeks to further improve this report by providing additional statements. Potentially including a balance sheet or a statement of cash flows, as well as other supporting schedules. Departments targeting Q three to have these new reports in place. Next slide. Uh next, just a few successes and challenges for finance. Uh key successes be the adoption of the. Twenty twenty-two budget and five-year plans with uh below inflationary cre- increase. Um getting key foundational policies adopted in twenty twenty-one. Be it financial reserves, investments, utility, fiscal, taxation, purchasing. And the successful transition of our fa- financial institution. Few challenges of note for for the department are uh, once again, budgeting to maintain services at little or no increase. In a period of high inflation, that's a challenge for the organization and and finances uh tasked with helping the departments figure out how to do that. Next would be building analytical resources within the department. We're very transactional heavy on our org- on our uh organizational charts. So looking at how we can get more analytical within the department, as well as increasing financial acumen within the organization. And lastly, continuing to adapt and evolve our processes to be more efficient and user-friendly for both internal and external customers. Next slide. Once again, I'd like to thank the committee for letting me present on some of the work uh the finance department does every year and some of the fun stuff we have planned for for twenty twenty-two. Uh this concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions the committee may have. Thank you.
Great, I agree. Thanks, uh Mr. DeBlanco on that. Um lots of really good information on there. Um uh council, anyone have any uh questions or comments? I I have one, but I'll, oh yeah, I see a council bar here. Over to you.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. DeBlanco. Just a very quick one. I didn't realize we had changed financial institutions. I don't know if it's appropriate for me to ask, uh who are we with now?
Uh sure, through the through the chair to committee member member Barnhart. Uh we did bring the report uh about, sorry, I believe it was in December of twenty twenty uh to bring the the recommended. Uh financial institution that we uh put out for tender and we changed to TD.
Thank you very much for that. I had forgotten.
Other questions from committee members? No, uh just maybe just a quick comment from from me, Curtis. Um you know, really, really appreciated the the update that you put as success to pass the budget. I think within that is is just a process to build that out, um and the opportunity to to weigh in uh as council ahead of time. One of the challenges uh for me that that I found and 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 I saw with with other councillors as well is. As we're going through that first part of that process where we submit the written quid- questions, where we're trying to ask questions in advance of that budget process. A lot of the times where there are, you know, projects, I'll call them for lack of a better term. Um but council was interested in finding out what what the capital costs of that would be to help inform their decisions as part of the budget process. Um you know, the response came back, you know, and and rightly so, um was, you know, you need a motion to pass. This is going to take a lot of work for administration to do. Therefore, we weren't able to have that discussion around that particular item of budget. So, um you know, one of the things that, just a heads up that I'll be bringing forward is just a motion to better. Um to to be able to have that discussion a lot earlier on with council um and and be able to set some some some. Some capital projects, I guess, that we would like administration to look into prior to getting into that budgeting process. Uh and essentially that the vision there is, you know, obviously, we you you guys will push back and and you know. Explain how how much time this is going to take to look into these things, so we'll need to be cognizant of that. Uh but I don't want to get into that spot again where we're waiting for that and all of a sudden we can't get it and we we missed that window. So. Um not necessarily, um you know, that discussion of, you know, what projects we absolutely support and want to go forward with, but more around. Why do we want to get some some good numbers around so that that can inform us through that through that budgeting process? So just a heads up on that. Um but but you guys, uh your department has has done some some sweeping changes. Um to to really, really improve that budgeting process, makes it a lot easier for me um as a council, but also residents to understand. So. Wanted to acknowledge that and and then also just a quick shout out to to the intern, um uh your finance intern there who uh. Who came up and introduced yourself to to a lot of us at uh at uh recent AMI, I think it was, whatever we're calling that now, so um Alberta municipality. So just wanted to acknowledge that, that we had, we all had a good conversation there, so um that that was great.
Thank you. We're we're lucky to have her, so glad she reached out to you guys there.
Yeah, I don't know how long these interns, you can keep turning them over or um figure out some way, but she she was great. So I'll leave it with you. Um alrighty, uh can I uh maybe grab a um maybe to put up another emotion uh on the on the. Floor here for to accept this presentation. Um I see count, uh sorry, Danilak, I pulled a ticket there. Mayor Danilak, uh over to you, mate, to to read that motion to record.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I moved that the committee of the whole received the January eighteen, twenty twenty-two finance department overview report as information. Thank you.
Thank you, and and I don't anticipate any questions or comments on that, so I'll call the question on that one. If anyone could vote by using the voting button, please. Uh that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. DeBlanco. Appreciate that. Uh that that moves us on to uh four E, the last of our presentations, certainly not the least. Um uh item four E, proposed draft business by law, a business license by law, I should say. Um and I see we've got Mr. Macken joining us here, so I will uh pass it over to you. Welcome.
Correct. Uh thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening, council. I also have Wendy Jones, our manager of economic development, is on the call as well. So uh between the two of us. We're excited here to present to council tonight uh our proposed business license by law. And let you know that we will be going out for public feedback and and feedback from our business community on this bylaw over the next month. So the current bylaw that we have in place uh was was passed in twenty fourteen, and as we know, there's been a lot of changes locally. And across uh the business uh community since that time. And so this bylaw, we've tried to incorporate a lot of the changes. So it might just be simply aligning with existing regulations, but the municipal or provincial level that have changed. But also, we've taken the opportunity to make it much more business-friendly. Um as as council, uh you know, has asked, we want to be an attractive community to grow and welcome investment and new business. So in this proposed new bylaw, you'll see that we've simplified the types of businesses that are included. We've simplified the fees, so it's not as confusing. And really, we've also simplified the process. Uh the goal here is is to not have multiple handoffs when a person needs to get a business license. To keep it simple, and we want to try to, as much as possible, build that relationship with the with that business, our customer in Beaumont. So for the most part, economic development will be owning that relationship, but we will be lia- liaising with a lot of the other departments. One thing that this bylaw actually does is ensures that the actual permits. Uh are in place from some of those other departments before we issue that business license. So it's a bit of a check there. Um some of the other uh just highlights that I'd like to mention the council that we've included in this bylaw. Is really making sure that we recognize that all businesses don't start on January one or halfway through the year. We prorated the fee. Um we also have added uh a really interesting concept that I think speaks to the regional nature of. Of obviously with Karen here this evening, the MRB, but also just the regional nature of our businesses. They operate across borders and they don't just necessarily see borders. So for the first uh in the region, we're introducing the concept of a regional business. And so right now, uh as long as they can provide us uh business licenses from two other communities within the EMRB. We're not going to charge them again to do business in Beaumont. We will give them a business license because, you know, they demonstrated that they're an active business in the region. And we want to have them here in Beaumont as well. And we believe that by doing this, it's really going to encourage entrepreneurs to consider Beaumont as a attractive place to do business. It makes it easier and reduces some of that red tape and 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 simplifies it for them. And really, at the end of the day, it it just, it streamlines them and says, hey, you know what? You do business with their neighbors, come here and do business with us. And we're not going to hit you with a fee. We're going to give you a license and welcome. A couple of other minor things that you you see in here around some of the proposed changes. It's really just making sure that uh when it comes to enforcement, we've got clear understanding. The previous bylaw was confusing and we actually had never really had to follow it too much just from an enforcement perspective. But this one makes it simple and 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 easier to understand. We also uh have added uh a thing around the door-to-door sales reps, which I think is important, but as we know, we're recognized as a very safe community. And since that time, the Consumer Protection Acts has changed, where they actually asked door-to-door sales reps. Uh to make sure that, you know, they've they've got the security checks, they've got everything in place. And so when a business comes to our community and wants to get a business license and they're doing door-to-door sales, we're asking them to provide that same thing. So a citizen knows that when somebody comes to their door, they can ask us to ensure that there's a business license in place and it aligns those regulations. So the next steps, council, is is we wanted to present this to you tonight, the the preview, because as of this week. We will be engaging the business community. We'll be reaching out to all of our current business license holders. And and encouraging them to go through it and provide us any direct feedback. We'll be doing a virtual open house here uh on January twenty-sixth. And we are also working closely with the Chamber of Commerce and other business groups in the community to make sure that we get feedback. And we make this the best bylaw possible going forward, uh because really, at the end of the day, um there's a lot of value in having. The business license process. It's the data, as we talked about earlier. There's a lot of information there that we can use for benefiting businesses, planning, et cetera.
Great. Thanks, Rob. The keyword I picked up there a couple of times was simplified, uh which uh always makes me smile, and so I appreciate that. And and looking forward to hearing the feedback um over the next little while. Uh questions? From council on on this initiative that uh Rob and Wendy are bringing forward for us? I see Council Tissier just uh just beat you there, cats, or uh over to you, Renee.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just a quick question on that uh. Two, if you have two or more businesses in the EMRB, you waive the fee. So does that include like franchises? Like the new Wendy's or even like existing businesses like McDonald's, Shoppers? We, they wouldn't be paying that annual fee then?
Right, if that same business owner has uh, you know, licenses into other municipalities, they wouldn't pay it in Beaumont.
Yeah, sounds good. Thanks.
And just to clarify. And just to clarify, you re, you emphasize the word business owner, so individual. So if an individual owns multiple franchises versus, you know, the corporation itself?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor McCook.
Thank you, Chair. So one of the questions I had was, I'd just like to see a lot more support for our local businesses. So I'm excited to see what some of the, the feedback is from our businesses. Especially considering fees and stuff for resident versus non-resident. I just noticed on the agenda and some of the pages, on one page you have $95 for resident versus non-residential 100. And then on another page, you have $95 for resident versus $106 for non-resident. Can you just clarify which one is correct?
For sure. I'm just going to flip that page. So I'm referencing the exact on draft fees. That is the, the fee that we're going forward with. So it is the 100. Sorry, I'm old school here tonight.
That's okay. I guess just as a difference.
So it's, it's, it's the $95 is what we're going forward with and non-resident is 106.
It is 106. Okay. Okay. So about $10 difference. Okay. Thank you. And then I also noticed that you noted that the Duke combined their member, theirs with their chamber membership. Just, do you know the reason for this? Was it just for the resident licenses? Or do non-resident licenses have to combine with that as well? And have we considered this? Is there benefits?
I, I know in the Duke County's case, it's actually, they never had business licenses and they're actually not even calling it business licenses. What they're doing, it's a, Wendy, do you remember the term? I apologize. It's, it's really not a bylaw.
It's, it's tied to the membership of the chamber in that they issue a business license. So they didn't, the two processes aren't comparative in terms of the bylaw and how it's regulated through the municipality. The, the chamber takes a membership and issues a business license certificate, so to speak. But it's a voluntary process with no, no fees and charges, as we understood, but tied to the license itself.
Okay, so quite different. Okay. And then the failure to obtain a license. Do we encounter this much?
So, for example, in 2021, we have approximately 770 businesses licensed in Beaumont. And at this time, there was about eight or nine businesses that we were still working with to get licenses. So under the previous bylaw, it, the enforcement, as I said, is a little bit more difficult. This one makes a little bit clearer of the process. But it's not a huge number, thankfully. And again, we understand that it was a difficult and a strange time.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I guess I'm looking forward to see what some of the public feedback is and great work. And as Counselor Monkoff Swain said, efficiency and stuff is, is definitely important. So I look forward to that. Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you, Council McCook. Counselor Miller, we'll, we'll go to you. I see your hand up there followed by.
Thank you, Chair. Through to Mr. Macken. When it comes to the engagement from the other businesses, I see that's going to be starting tomorrow. According to your, according to your sheet here. So how is that going to be? How are you doing that? Are you, are you, like, how are you engaging these businesses? And then once you receive the feedback from the businesses, how are you going to get that information out to the public? And can, are we able to see or are they going to be able to view kind of the grievances or the feedback that these businesses have given?
For sure. Thank you for the question, Counselor Miller. So we are going to be sending emails out. We have a, a significant database within our CRM of, of the current businesses. So we'll be reaching out to them directly, asking them to review it, getting their feedback. And then over the period of the next month, between the virtual info session and, and the, and the email, and there will be probably dialogue to the Chamber of Commerce as, as well. Is, is we have time in our schedule to gather all of that, see if there's some commonalities, seeing if there's some real, you know, improvements that we can make. So that we've got this next month to, to take that time to incorporate it. And when we do come back to council in February, we'll plan to have those revisions included at that time, if there are.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. I think that would be like, like you alluded to in the beginning, there the simplicity of this. And I think the residents will really, or the business owners especially, will really love to see the feedback because they've all felt it and had it. And then, yeah, just to, to get this process a little more sped up would be excellent. So great, great job.
Thanks, Counselor Miller. I couldn't agree more. If we're going to ask the question, we've got to make sure we, we let folks know what we're doing with the information and share that back. So I know you've got that under control, Rob. Good, good question there. Counselor Van Newkirk, over to you, mate.
Hey, bet. Yeah, thanks for putting this together and presenting tonight, Rob. The main piece of feedback I've received on the business licenses has actually been the length of the form that has to be filled out. So when I click on the link, the new business license application, it's only two pages. So that's quick and dirty. But the home-based business one is like eight pages long. When I read through the eight pages of checkboxes and questions and stuff, I can understand 100% how you got there. There's a lot of blood, sweat and tears and grievances. That's a good word, Counselor Miller. You know, they, they come to getting an eight-page document to start a home-based business in Beaumont. But, you know, what I'll note is that despite it being eight pages, we have a huge number of home-based businesses in Beaumont. So just wondering, is there a plan to make that eight-page document more succinct at, at any point here? Or, or shrink it or use smaller font or something just to, you know, I think you know where I'm going. So.
And I know that Wendy's been working on this quite closely, so I'll let her take this.
So I'll proudly show you the amount of markups that have happened on those forms. And as we're diligently working through them right now, we've, they are antiquated, absolutely. And so we've looked to streamline so that you can jump a section if it doesn't need to be responded to within the application. The general contractor is a good one in terms of you can have five subcontractors listed that wouldn't get a fee charge. We only need their name. It doesn't need another full form filled out. So in things like that, where it's a general contractor, you have ticket at the top and you jump to page two. So yeah, very much an effort on that. And we do know, excuse me, through the digitization process, that we will be over the next year, working very hard to make this as much as online process as possible, which will also help.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
All right. Looks like we'll finish up on this one here with Mayor Danlock.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Macken and Ms. Jones, for your presentation. Just a quick question, if you don't mind. On the concept of the regional business with the business person having a license in other municipalities coming to Beaumont, having no license fee. If I could be devil advocate just for a moment here, I, I see potentially, have you given consideration or anticipating pushback? For example, let's say a plumbing firm or electrical firm or drywalling firm who is based in Sherwood Park is also licensed for Saskatchewan, now wants to come to Beaumont to start doing work in Beaumont. And we're saying, come to Beaumont, work here, pay no license fee, but compete directly against a drywall firm or electrical firm or plumbing firm in my example, who's based here in Beaumont. Could we not perceive that that, those local businesses would feel being competed against? Sorry, I put, I put that part, you know what I'm getting at. They're being unfairly treated from a licensed perspective. It's, it's, it's a fee, but it's, it's the perception that I think, I like the innovation part of this idea. I do. I just wonder have, have we anticipated the pushback or am I going down the wrong path of this concept, please?
So one of our reasons for putting this forward, Counselor Danlock, is really to hopefully encourage other municipalities to also consider the exact same approach. Because, you know, we, we, we wanted to take the lead there. We know that we have business operating within the region. $96 or $106 is, is not a lot of money for some businesses. However, it's more the, we want to be perceived as regional thinking, as, as a, as a community and, and as a business community. So we're hoping that other municipalities will also jump on board. They'll see that, hey, why is Beaumont allowing for that? Maybe we should. And start getting some dialogue because it's been talked about in certain circles within the region since I've been here, but nobody's actually started it. So who knows? It may evolve a bit, but I, I believe that, you know, the businesses know no borders.
Thank you. I appreciate, I do appreciate the, the higher level thinking on this at the 20,000-foot level, but I'm worried about the guys down in the trenches who've gone through a couple of tough years and feeling that we're opening the door to a competitor who may not normally, they wouldn't have come here had we not known they could come and save a hundred bucks on a license. I'm just trying to be objective on the idea and look forward to the feedback from the business community. If they don't feel that way, nothing's said in the, in the engagement process, that's okay. But I just wanted to let it, and I knew as you was on your radar, I'm assuming it was, more to just raise the idea while I, I do appreciate the innovation part of the idea. And we'll see what happens in the public engagement. So thank you very much for clarifying my question. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You bet. And maybe one, sorry, I'll see Counselor Bernhardt. You go ahead, Kathy.
Sorry, I just had a last, last.
You're fine.
Mr. Macken, have the business licenses gone out for this year yet? Or are you waiting until after this feedback?
So we've got, and please feel free, Wendy, to step in here as well, but we are actually seeing a lot of businesses proactively. They know that it's the beginning of the year. They know it's time. So we're not actively sending out a bunch of notices at this time. We're actually just organically getting them to come in. We want to get the feedback from the bylaw, but really that won't come into play until, you know, later this year. So we are accepting business licenses, the current by, under the current bylaw, but we're not actively mailing out renewals.
Maybe I wasn't clear enough. The renewal is due and we usually get a reminder that our renewal is due?
For sure. Wendy, you want to, I know that we are, we're changing things up a little bit this year.
Okay. So they, so they will be coming out. That's all I wanted to say.
Wendy, do you have a?
There were, because the bylaw was coming out so early in the renewal period. And so what we did do is we did hold off sending out the renewal notices that do come in, normally come out in about December, late November. And so what we are doing is the renewals will start coming out over the next couple of weeks. We've never had or imposed a hard line of them requiring to be paid by January 31 with a penalty being attached after that. We've always worked with our business community, especially over the last couple of years. There's been some hardships, we know. So the business license fee schedule is also noted within the fees and charges that that won't take effect until, so while we're kind of in the transition of the adoption of a new bylaw anticipated, none of that will kick in as well until the bylaw has actually achieved third reading. So there'll just be an interim period. We'll be letting our business community know that as well. And as we're going through the engagement period and, and providing, you know, notices to, you know, come and engage with us, we'll also be doing a, a personal follow-up in terms of, and by the way, your renewal is due. But we're trying not to send, make everybody fill out a new renewal application as well. Because we don't see that information as being necessarily on a yearly basis to have everybody fill out a new renewal form. It's more, tell us if any of your information has changed. If it has, please resubmit.
Good, good idea. I'm just thinking if you're mailing out anything, it's a good opportunity to mail out some information about the changes. Save, save the stamp.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bernhardt. And, and just to foreshadow some of my questioning once it comes back after the public engagement and, and maybe, Rob, if you've got the opportunity, maybe you should mute me here, but I'm personally not a big fan of the, the business license by, just the fee itself, like it's just such a small amount of revenue into, into the city, particularly for Beaumont businesses. So, you know, one of the questions I'm going to have for you after that is, you know, why do we even have a fee itself? And so just, just think about that. I recognize that the incredible value of having the log and, and maybe if you don't ask people to pay for it, then maybe, maybe you're not going to do it, but it just seems to be a way to be able to automate this, get this information and, and really encourage folks. So again, I, I don't know enough about it, but it just seems like an, an old school kind of approach and, you know, for, for the amount of revenue to process the admin fee, I think it could be resolved. So anyway, I, I won't go into too much detail on that, but I'll, I'll leave it there. I don't see anyone else. So I, I'll look for, and I see my internet connection is, is unstable. So I don't know if that was you, Rob, pulling the strings behind the scenes with your connections with our 10 gig friends and not with my idea, but well done if that was. I'll, I'll ask the clerk to, to bring up a motion to, to receive that as information. If that's okay. And I'll ask my friend, Counselor Tissier, to, to move that if that's okay, mate.
No problem, Chair. That the committee of the whole received the January 18, 2022 report, proposed draft business bylaw as information. Thanks.
Thank you. I'll, I don't expect any comments on that. So I'll call a question. And that carries unanimously. Thanks, Rob and Wendy, for a great overview. Looking, really looking forward to hearing the, the feedback on, on that as we, as we, as you guys get that feedback over the next little while here. So that moves us over to, to item number five, council inquiries. Any council inquiries tonight from, from committee members? Counselor Barhart.
Thank you very much, Chair. So my inquiry is about advertising for city positions. And I, I gave Mike a very late heads up about this this afternoon. So I totally appreciate if this comes back at a later date. What I'd like to know is what are the current channels we're using media and advertising channels for positions that are most commonly used? And how often are postings generally run? And we were to give people recommendations about where to look for jobs, job postings within the city of Beaumont. Where would that be?
Thank you very much for your query, Counselor Barhart, through the chair. What I would suggest is, and we can give you the answers to all those questions, but rather than me shoot from the hip, we will turn this into a counselor inquiry and we'll bring back a, the template with all that data in it for the next meeting.
That's fine. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Barhart. I'll also acknowledge earlier in the, the conversation, Counselor Tissier asked a question that we turned into an inquiry and so administration has confirmed that they have received that and logged that as a, as a formal inquiry. So that, that'll come back through the, through our regular process. Anything else from Kathy? Your hand is still up. Is that just a legacy hand there? Yeah, okay. Alrighty. Well, that, that sees us close off item five. So we're moving into item six, closed session. So I'll ask the clerk to, to put up that motion again. This time I might pick on you, Counselor McCook, if you don't mind moving this one.
Yep. I moved that the committee of the whole meet in closed session to discuss matters protected from disclosure under the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, sections 24 and 25.
Perfect. Thank you. And I'll call a question on that one, please. That carries unanimously. So we'll, we'll start back up at five minutes past the hour here, folks. We'll jump off live and sort of discuss exactly five minutes, just turn it at a clock. So we'll see you in five. Welcome back, everyone. We had a discussion in a closed session. We do have one piece of business to, to come out of that and there'll be a motion that I'll, I'll read into the, into the record and then we'll, we'll vote on that. So I, I move that the January 18, 2022 Committee of the Whole report High School Land Assembly be referred to administration for further work and to report back on the feasibility of assembling a school site in Beaumont, including timelines and costs by the end of the first quarter of 2022. And that the January 2018 report remain confidential pursuant to sections 24 and 25 of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. I'll, no discussion on that motion. So I'll, I'll call the vote. Folks, if you could make that, please. I count seven that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. With that, I have the privilege to get to the, the end of our agenda here. Item number seven. Um, uh, item number seven, adjournments are, uh, at, what time are we here? At nine twelve PM marathon effort tonight, um, guys, uh, sorry, nine twelve PM, I'll, uh, adjourn the meeting. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Good night.